Okay, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for April 23rd, 2024. What a beautiful day today. City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Mayor Melkut.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Lee, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which was formed by a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight, and the first one is National Week of Action for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls, and Councilmember Stokes will read it. And when he's done, we'll have Shauna, and Ruben, and Winona come up and accept it. If you want to speak, you can do that, and then we'll do a picture, and then we'll go on to the next one. So Councilmember Stokes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the city of Bellevue acknowledges that Bellevue and surrounding areas exist on the ancestral homelands of the Coast Salish people, including the Duwamis, who are the original caretakers of this land, and are still here fostering their rich and vibrant culture and continuing to honor their heritage. And whereas, three out of four Native women will be physically assaulted in their lifetime, the second leading cause of death for Indigenous girls aged 1 to 4 is murder. According to the Urban Indian Health Institute, while the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention list murder as the third leading cause of death for American Indian and Alaska Native women, and whereas since 2015, 17, grassroots actions have grown at the local, regional, national, and international levels to recognize May 5th as a national day of awareness for missing and murdered Indigenous women, to honor and call for justice for all missing and murdered Indigenous women around the globe, and whereas, a national week of action, April 29th through May 5th, calls all communities to action in honor of the thousands of missing and murdered Indigenous women across the United States, and whereas tribal governments and communities report the loss of Indigenous women, it's devastating to both tribal communities and the nation. As insufficient resources and data, complex legal frameworks under reporting of assaults, and lack of clarity on jurisdictional responsibilities have exacerbated barriers and honored and hindered efforts to locate those who are missing. And whereas Bellevue commits to continuing to nurture relationships and support our local tribal governments and the community's efforts to increase awareness while pursuing and supporting equitable outcomes for tribes and communities of color as we honor the experiences and wisdom of our diverse population. Therefore, I, John Stokes, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 29th through May 5th, 2024, as National Week of Action for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls in Bellevue, recognizing the unique and disproportionate rates of violence against this population, and calling on our communities to say enough is enough by participating in events exploring available sources or organizing awareness activities in your community. Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. And I'd like to ask Ruben Twinn, Winona George, and Shauna Hattipat come up, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Ruben Twinn. I'm an Oglala Lakota from Pine Ridge, South Dakota, and I currently work for Mother Nation, and we're a nonprofit organization that works for the missing, murdered Indigenous women and children in the youth prevention program here in King County. And so on behalf of us, we'd like to say thank you for the recognition of this week, and I will let our program manager from MMIWP share some words.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Robinson and city council. Very humbling to ask to be a part of this proclamation, and yes, it is. We do suffer disproportionately still to this day, and so much so that they had to create a position for us to, Winona George and I, to help address the need to, for the missing murdered Indigenous women and people. I'm the MMIWP family advocate for Mother Nation, and this is my coworker, and she's also the intern, Winona George. Thank you for allowing us to be here.
Hello, my name's Winona George. I am a current intern from Mother Nation, also a student at University of Washington, majoring in social work. This means a lot to me as a future social worker, seeing that other people care and value the safety of people's lives, and we handle this work with a lot of compassion. Thank you.
Okay, the next proclamation is Global Youth Services Day, read by Councilmembers on, and we'll have Tika Smith come down after if she'd like to speak, and then we'll do a picture. Go ahead, Councilmembers on.
Great, thank you. Whereas Global Youth Service Day is the longest-running annual youth participation event in the world, and whereas originally launched as National Youth Service Day in the United States, Global Youth Service Day is a coordinated annual event that encourages youth in more than 100 countries to engage in community service, service learning, and youth voice activities that benefit their communities. And whereas the city of Bellevue values and supports youth participation in civic engagement and community service throughout the year, and whereas the Bellevue Youth Link program has been providing community service and leadership opportunities for Bellevue youth for over 34 years through the Youth Council and the Youth Link Board, and whereas the city of Bellevue celebrates youth who volunteer through local service organizations in support of the improvement of the Bellevue community, and encourages youth to serve with Bellevue Youth Link, a program providing community services and leadership opportunities for Bellevue youth for over 34 years via the Youth Council and the Youth Link Board. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, as Global Youth Service Day in Bellevue, and encourage all youth and their families to seek out ways to give back to our city through community service.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. Tika Smith, would you like to come and speak? Is she here today? No? Oh, okay. All right, next we have Building Safety Month proclamation, and we have Councilmember Nguyen-House reading that, and afterwards we'll have Greg Schrader and Fire Marshal Travis Ripley come up.
Thank you. Whereas the city of Bellevue is committed to recognizing that our vibrant and livable city depends on the safety and essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure in everyday life, as well as during disasters. And whereas Bellevue values creating and maintaining reliable infrastructure that supports our thriving and growing city, as we all work together to achieve the shared goal of achieving a high-quality built and natural environment. And whereas the dedication and talents of our building safety and fire prevention officials, as well as architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and many others in the construction industry who work to ensure a safe construction, give us confidence in the quality of the buildings that make up our community. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and state and local officials in Washington to educate the community about the critical role of many people across the industry who have vital roles in assuring safe buildings for all of us. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor, city of Bellevue, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Building Safety Month in Bellevue, and want to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us in the community by the professionals who work to provide protection for lives and safety.
Thank you. Greg and Fire Marshal Ripley.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council. Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen-House, for reading the proclamation. We are very appreciative. I think it speaks for itself. We're fortunate to have great partners in the private sector that we work closely with on a daily basis to ensure the safety of the built environment, and I am also especially appreciative of the expertise and experience of the city teams who work each day to review plans and inspect construction. And I'll turn it over to Fire Marshal Ripley.
Yeah, thank you for your support in this, you know, as the Fire Marshal and focusing my career in fire prevention, you know, building safety is a key part of that, and, you know, I just appreciate you guys celebrating with us in this month of awareness.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda. Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications? This is different than a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there are five speakers pre-registered for oral communications, so I'll go over a few of the rules for the public's benefit that the council has put in place for oral communications, and then as the mayor mentioned, we do have a public hearing tonight, so if you have registered for oral coms but are intending to speak on the public hearing, you will not be able to comment during oral coms. That item is 9A, so it's later on our agenda. So a few of the rules. The total time for oral communications is for a time period not to exceed 30 minutes. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. Presiding officer in both of those cases is authorized to give preference to those people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who are speaking on items that will come in front of the council on their agenda within the next 60 days. Speakers are allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. With that, I will call our first speaker, who is Charag Saraw.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. My name is Charag Singh, and I have been a resident of Bellevue my whole life. I was born in Overlake Hospital, and I've lived in the Woodridge neighborhood ever since. I deeply appreciate the beauty of the city of Bellevue and how well it is organized and managed, but it has become clear that there's injustice in our city.
Charag, excuse me, can you back up just a little bit? There you go.
Sorry. My family has been dealing with a squatter in our rental home for two years now, which has caused significant emotional distress on my family, and we are fighting an uphill battle. This squatter is living in my very neighborhood. The squatter has even filed multiple restraining orders against my father, which prevented him from even traveling down the road, which we used to do every day. A sizable portion of my family's effort has been allotted to this fight. There have been countless weekends and breaks which have been used entirely on fighting this battle. This has taken away from our time together as a family and our ability to travel or relax on our days off school and work. As six, we will always remain in Chardikala, meaning that we will always maintain a mental state of resilience and optimism. We refuse to stop fighting despite efforts by others to suppress our voice. In Siki, we highlight the importance of not committing injustice, and it is equally important that we prevent injustice wherever we can, we can, it is equally important that we fight against injustice that we witness. Through this endeavor, I've learned the importance of being fluent in the law of your community and the importance of contributing your effort to making sure the rules are just. It has become clear that this system needs to be changed. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tyler Tonkin.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Tyler Tonkin. I'm a principal and executive vice president at GLY Construction. We're a Bellevue-based general contractor and have built many significant projects in the city, city of Bellevue over the years, such as Overlake Medical Center expansions, Lincoln Square expansions. We have ongoing work at the Bellevue Collection. Most recently, we completed West Main, and 20 years ago or so, I was a project manager on Bellevue City Hall. We are part of the community and take our duty to be good stewards of public interest, working in collaboration with residents and stakeholders very seriously. I have reviewed the proposed changes to the city's noise ordinance, and I have discussed these with change, discuss these changes, excuse me, with fellow general contractors who work in the city of Bellevue. We are supportive of the citywide changes proposed in option B, and ask you to support it too. Large-scale construction projects present unique and time-constrained challenges. Careful activity preparation and completion at the beginning and end of each day are necessary to ensure safe, secure, and efficient projects, and increasing the exempt construction noise hours in the city in accord with option B will typically allow sufficient hours for construction tasks and help to avoid the volume of noise ordinance exceptions and variances and complaints that are typically experienced today. Approving option B will allow for the delivery of construction projects to happen more quickly, which I think will benefit the city by delivering jobs, housing, and commercial space faster, and by reducing the overall duration of the construction impacts like noise and traffic on neighboring businesses and residents. We think this is the right approach. Thank you for addressing this important topic, and we ask that you support and approve option B. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Frost, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Frost, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson and council members, my name is Maria Frost, and I'm the Transportation Director at Kemper Development. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify on Bike Bellevue this evening. First, I want to thank you all so much for the new reasonable and balanced direction that you provided on March 25th regarding Bike Bellevue implementation. We especially appreciate your numerous comments and Councilmember Nguyen-House's amendment that repurposing travel lanes is to be a last resort. I'm hopeful about the alternatives we've discussed and provided for each corridor, and look forward to the city implementing a multimodal transportation system that truly accommodates and improves the mobility of all modes, consistent with Bike Bellevue principle four. This approach is also clearly responsive to what you've heard from residents and businesses and the Bellevue Chambers EMC poll, which shows 72% oppose replacing road lanes with bike lanes. Again, thank you for taking the time to hear from everyone on all sides of this issue and finding a balanced path forward that provides bike lanes without worsening traffic congestion for people who drive. On April 11th, the Transportation Commission moved forward with three Bike Bellevue corridors in response to your direction to implement projects that do not remove travel lanes. Staff indicated to you that there are two projects that do not remove travel lanes, the Lake Washington Boulevard and Wilburton Route, but added Northeast Second Street between Bellevue Way and 112th, or corridor 6B, to the list, though its current draft design eliminates a westbound through lane, a westbound right-turn lane, and a center left-turn lane. I want to emphasize that commissioners approved this portion of the Northeast Second Street corridor contingent on staff redesigning the project so that no such travel lane elimination occurs, as there is sufficient right-of-way to add bike lanes without these lane removals. Commissioners McGill and Ting reiterated that this project moves forward only if the redesign can be accomplished, and if it cannot be, the project must come back to the commission. Staff agreed, and the vote was unanimous based on this understanding. Further, for the Wilburton Route or Corridor 9, the current design shows elimination of a southbound right-turn lane on 116th, and we want to make sure that the final design for this project and Northeast Second is consistent with council direction in category one, but more importantly, that all of these projects are consistent with your direction in category two, that lane removal should be a last resort after all other options have been exhausted. Thank you again for your thoughtful comments, hours of debate, and for being responsive to your constituents. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with council, commission, and staff on the remaining corridors the commission will assign categories to in June.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jas Karan Singh.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Robinson, and good evening, council members. Thank you for, thank you for having me, and thank you, staff. Thank you, police. And my dad used to say, when I was young, that Jimmy, you can't buy common sense. You can go to a good education, you can get a good food, but that's the only thing, the common sense. That, I think, is missing nowadays. A lot of people, they're not able to understand this is common sense. The issue should be not be ego, not should be any political issue, it's a common sense issue, what's right or wrong. I have sent a multiple invitations to Bellevue Council. I have been doing protests for the last six weeks. Lot of city sources have been used there, and I'm simply raising a issue in the system. System is broken, and it should be accepted, and it should be fixed, and you guys are representing us, and the issue is just two miles from where we are sitting here. It's not an issue around the other side of the world. And in my case, the freedom of speech is getting selective. If you have a world issue, you can speak freely, but if I'm asking for my rights, where are my rights? Then I am given a temporary restraining order. So yes, I am challenging the system because it's broken. Many of us came here because of the system. I have a right to ask why my taxpayer money is used like this. I have a right. I need to know why my taxpayer money is spent like this. How will it help the tenants? In my neighborhood, there are seven vacant homes. Few are inherited, few are other. People are not listing the, for a rent because of this eviction issues. I am not the only one. Many are suffering. I got the calls from all over the states. People, this is not America I dream for. This was not America four years before the COVID. And I have been laid off many times. I have worked hard. I got a new job. I started my living. We worked hard, me and my wife both are working, and we work hard to make our needs meet. Everyone should do. That's, this is the country for the opportunity. That's why we came here. And look at the timer. This is the same thing. I have a signed lease. It was expired last year, and the guy is still there. We have a Housing Justice Project lawyer sitting here. Will she represent me if I keep sitting here more than three minutes? No, we have a policeman, and mayor will ask to go out. So I fix the broken system, audit Housing Justice Project.
Mr. Singh, your time has expired.
Yeah. I'll follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the city attorney follow-up with Mr. Singh and explain whose purview this is, as it's not the Bellevue City Council, and I, yeah.
Yes, Mayor, we can do that.
Yeah, and also explain that if there's anything that the Bellevue City Council can do to affect this, that they will let us know. The attorney will let us know.
Yes, and I'd be happy to meet with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
I'm very happy to talk to you. I never see crook like this, like you, in my life for a year, what as I live here, and I have experience with you for 30 years, every day. Yeah, I love you. You show exactly what's happened with America. Couple points, what does I want to deliver you today? Number one, why you elect promote Iranian Muslim, you know what it means, when we have war with Iran? Can you somebody explain to me?
I'm going to ask you not to talk about our council members in ways that are not true and trying to malign them, okay?
Why are you talking about my time?
I'm asking you not to talk about individual council members in ways that are not true.
I don't talk about individual, I not mention name. Don't give Mrs. BS.
I don't care.
I know rules. Okay, no problemo. No name, and I never use name. So my question right now, why I start talking about this, very simple, you know what it means. We have 25,000 Chinese who represent by two council. We don't have Jew here, we don't have Russian here, thousand and thousand Russian.
I'm just going to stop you. I don't even know what you're saying, and I'm going, this is going to be your second warning. Just tell me a message without maligning anybody and without trying to talk about who is or who is not on the council, okay?
Yes, okay, thank you very much. I will talk about police who right now terrorize me. Can I spoke about police who terrorize me for many years? Right now, for last year, I have 10 ticket, I have totally 60 in Bellevue. 10 ticket for last, 10 trespasses, 10 appeal, no one positive word. Right now, last meeting, they catch me, he told me they tow in my car because I don't show them insurance. I have insurance, and I told you, go to court. We can go to court. And whether you stop in this Nazi Gestapo who terrorize me, who bring criminal case what is so close government, $150,000. Yeah, you know about this? Can I spoke about brutality? It broken my leg and broken my hand, yeah? Can I spoke about this? And I will promise, so I bring case against policeman and against you, because what is you doing is a Nazi Gestapo principle. Why you cannot talking about politica? It's politica, yeah, I talking about this. We have 50,000 Indian here, and nobody elect him. 50,000. We have Russian, we have Jew, nobody here. So what is you quiet now, huh? 50,000 Indian don't can represent here, people 50,000 in city. Guys, what is make me sick? It's not because you stupid. It's okay with me, stupidity is your business, you know what it means. What is make me sick, so you acting against law, constitution, court decision, and everything. You acting like a Nazi pig. You are a Nazi pig. I cannot find another war. Stand up, America.
City manager.
That is the end of our.
City manager, could somebody follow up with him if he has proof of insurance now that he can come back and show that? I know there's a way to do that.
Thank you, Mayor, for looking to it.
All right, thank you.
That is the end of our pre-registered list, and we do have some time remaining in oral coms, so at this point, I'd ask if there's anyone joining us in council chambers or anybody online who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Again, as a reminder, we have a public hearing tonight. We cannot take comments on that public hearing until we get to that item. Here, there is one hand online, and that is Joe Kuntzer. Mr. Kuntzer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me just fine? I have a new microphone.
We can. Your time begins now.
Why, thank you, Madam Cork, Joe Kuntzer here. I really appreciate how this mayor tried to redirect Mr. Zimmerman tonight, and I just want to lend my voice and support. It's really deplorable, disgusting, inhumane, unpatriotic, anti-American to attack people who are volunteering on their Tuesday night away from YouTube, away from, you know, family, away from our parks in a beautiful evening, and I just want to condemn that kind of hateful, anti-American language and rhetoric. I also want to say on a very personal level, with a Jewish relative, that I think your deputy mayor is a great guy, and I don't think you should be spoken to the way he is, just for living the American dream, and I think if you love this country, you don't run around and insult immigrants. And on that note, I want to briefly reassure the great people of Bellevue that I am lobbying hard the city of Redmond to adopt defenses of public comment from bullies like Mr. Zimmerman and the city council dev squad, so that we protect not just Redmond, but Bellevue and the rest of the Sound Transit community. No one should be subjected to this kind of hate, and I hope that you will, you as a council, will speak out against it when it appears, and will support Redmond as it develops its defenses. I'm trying to get them to vote, to approve them, May 7th. We'll find out in a few hours. Worst-case scenario, May 21st, I hear, but doing what I can here. My time is, I've still got a bit of time, so I just want to say, I don't know if I'm going to make the, the Badu, the Badu, the two-line celebrations tonight, but I'm very happy that finally the east side of. celebrations tonight, but I'm very happy that finally the east side of the Sound Transit community is going to finally have some sexy light rail. So I just want to congratulate you on that and give you back a minute of your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone in chambers? Okay, Mayor, I see no additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. So I just want to say, you know, I really appreciate that 99.99% of the people who come to public comment speak in a civil manner, in an intelligent manner, and in a productive manner. We're here because we represent the community. Our council vision statement starts with Bellevue welcomes the world, our diversity is our strength. And we are proud of our community and we proudly represent our community. And we are happy to be here to listen to people who come down, whether it's on the agenda or not, to talk about the issues that they are experiencing in the city. So I just want to thank 99.99% of you for doing, for coming and talking to us and allowing us to represent you. Okay, we're on to the report of the city manager, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. We have two items prepared for city manager's report and then following the second item, I have a verbal report that I would like to give you. The first is related to the link to line grand opening. So very exciting to share information about the service opening on the east side this Saturday, the 27th. And we have staff here tonight who will give a brief overview about the opening and the ceremony and what's happening on Saturday and invite the public to come and be part of the celebration. So joining tonight, we have from Transportation, Maher Walahe, Assistant Director of Capital Program Services, from the city manager's office, Public Information Officer Laura Milstead, and Assistant Police Chief Andrew Popachak. So with that, I think Maher is kicking it off. Is that correct?
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to be here and to share the excitement of the two line opening. So as our teams have been preparing for Saturday, we have been reflecting on the citywide effort that it has taken over the years in partnership with Sound Transit to deliver the service to Bellevue. From conducting outreach through acquisition process, design review process, construction management and inspection, and to finalizing the MOU, there have been hundreds of staff members, past and present, who helped us get here. So it's been a long journey, a lot of effort. Just a couple of items to note. Sound Transit began safety testing and pre-service checks in November 2023, just last fall. And as many of us have seen, the trains running regularly, Sound Transit conducted simulated service between February and March timeframe and to prepare for Saturday's start of service. Looking into the future and what's next, we will continue to work with Sound Transit to prepare for the full two line opening next year and also will be pushing out safety messaging related to the upgrade crossing in the Bellred area. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Laura.
Yeah. And as we look towards this Saturday and the start of the celebration, just wanted to share out a few reminders for what service will look like with the upcoming starter line. We'll have eight stations here on the east side of Lake Washington with the Redmond Technology Center to the north, all the way down to the South Bellevue Station on the south end. Service hours for the public will be between 5:30 a.m. and 9:30 p.m. Sound Transit will be running two car trains roughly every 10 minutes, seven days per week. There are two park and ride options for the public that are now available, but kind of we see them fully operational in conjunction with the trains once the stations open. Those are the park and rides at the South Bellevue Station as well as Bellred. And then a quick note on kind of bus connections, there are no planned service changes for King County Metro and Sound Transit Express until the full two line opens later next year. So current routes will remain in place and we'll start to see kind of those newly implemented revised plans with the full two line. So that is the start to service, but as we look towards, more specifically, the celebration that Sound Transit has planned for this Saturday, we are very much looking forward to see everyone at the downtown Bellevue, at the Bellevue Downtown Station here next to City Hall Plaza. The celebration will kick off with a ribbon cutting at 10 a.m. over on, directly in front of the station. Both Sound Transit and the city are really highly encouraging anyone who is planning to attend to take transit to the event, to bike, walk, roll, just due to limited parking. Attendees will not be able to take the two line to the ribbon cutting event at Downtown Station, but there will be the regularly scheduled 550 Express that leaves from South Bellevue as well as some special event shuttling that King County will provide from South Bellevue as well. That will run approximately 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. And then lastly, once the ribbon cutting is complete around 11 a.m., that really kicks off and essentially activates all eight stations along the alignments. First trains at each station will start running at 11 and that will also kick off these community-led events scheduled throughout, throughout the two line. So just to highlight a few, just to get excited for Saturday, the Pacific Science Center will be hosting some interactive pop-up exhibits at the South Bellevue Station. East Rail Partners, along with Kaiser and Overlake Hospitals, will be distributing helmets and first aid kits at the Wilberton Station. There'll be an opportunity to paint a community wall mural and listen to musical performances at Bellred. And then here at the Bellevue Downtown Station, the BDA has planned a great kind of street festival that will be located on 110th. And then you can also find, city staff will be out there tabling as well, talking about the Grand Connection with the public, the Grand Connection Crossing, I should say, as well as other city programs. So we're very much looking forward to seeing everyone there. And I'll hand it off to Assistant Chief Popchak to talk public safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. For the opportunity to talk about safety in our light rail system. So first off, I really want to look at that goal of what the police department is trying to achieve with this. And it is that people feel safe and there is a reduced fear of crime as well as reduced crime on this system. And that's something we've been working at for a number of years and we truly appreciate the council's support in our, in providing us the resources that we need in order to do this. A key part of that resource is actually the Bellevue Light Rail Unit, which was a part of the last budget cycle. I'm happy to say that that unit is ready as of April 27th. The benefit of that unit is they are multimodal. They're going to be on bikes, they'll be on foot, they'll be in the trains, they're going to be out in cars. And by the ability for them to go in multiple different places and use those different abilities, they can be where the, where the community needs them to be. And we want every person that rides the system, the rail system here, to see an officer and have that great communication that our department is known for and that feeling of safety when they get onto our platforms and move through this city. So I wanted to say thank you to the council for their support in that. We could not do this alone, though. This has changed Bellevue. We now have a very large tunnel that this train runs through. We have an elevated line that runs right across the freeway. So it has changed the environment that our officers have to work in. And that is where the partnership has come in with both the city, the fire department, the transportation, as well as our regional partners like Sound Transit and the King County Sheriff's Department so that we're working with them. And our unit blue has been training and working with Sound Transit, working with the King County Sheriff's Department so that we're ready when this starts in the city of Bellevue. So we're really excited about this and excited about this new opportunity to engage the community. And the other resources we have like CCAT and CARES and those other police units can work in partnership with our blue team in order to make sure everyone, housed, unhoused, residents, visitors, feel safe in this community, safe on this train system. And we're really excited for this. We're going to be at the event on the 20, the 27th and I hope to, that you will get to interact with some of our officers and, and, and feel that, that feeling of safety inside of this rail system. So we are ready, we're prepared, and we're excited. I'm going to hand this back over. Thank you.
I think that will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our second city manager report is an update on the Bike Bellevue program from Andrew Singalakis, Transportation Director, and Kevin McDonald, Principal Transportation Planner. As you know, at the March 25th meeting, you provided some additional guidance to the Transportation Commission for the Bike Bellevue program and tonight they're here to provide an update on the first deliverable in response to the council's additional guidance. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Well, thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Melakutian, and the rest of the council. And as stated previously, during the March 25th meeting, council provided direction to the Transportation Commission, which is listed on the screen on the next slide. And we'd like to thank the council for providing that guidance. We're here to report back about the action taken by the Transportation Commission on April 11th. And if you recall, Bike Bellevue consists of 11 corridors that are intended to be rapid build, primarily meaning that they occur within city right of way, relatively inexpensive and with a paint and flex post. The Transportation Commission, due to time constraints, only addressed the first one on this list, and that is the corridors that do not require the repurposing of a travel lane. They ended up selecting three of them unanimously. And Kevin will describe those in a minute. And the next step after that is for it to go into design and then go back for review with the Transportation Commission again. And then after that, it's off to constructing them. The Transportation Commission will move on to the other items that are listed right there, number seven, two to seven, at their meeting coming up in May. We expect to categorize the rest of the corridors during that meeting. Some of these may or may not, it'll happen over several meetings, but some of them may or may not involve repurposing of travel lanes. But if that's the case, it's going to be very clear that it's the only alternative to doing so and that it would be considered to be a demonstration project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Singalakis. Good evening, council. The Transportation Commission was, was actually pleased to receive the council direction with respect to the categorization of the 11 Bike Bellevue corridors as described in the, in the draft design concept. And again, as Andrew mentioned, they focused on the first category, which was the corridors that would not require travel lane repurposing and, and to be able to implement those corridors as soon as possible. So the, the three corridors that staff has identified and the council concurred, the commission concurred that would be in that first category would be a corridor, corridor segments called the Wilberton Route, which consists of a segment of 120th through Wilberton, Northeast 4th Street between Wilberton, between 120th and 116th, and then proceeding south on 116th to connect with Main Street and the nice new bridge across Main Street to access downtown. The, the character of, of that corridor, it changes a course along its length and the, the resulting infrastructure for the bicycle facility may also change along that corridor depending on the context. The second corridor is the Lake Washington Boulevard. It's not really a corridor, it's, it's more of a segment. It's a short segment between 99th and 100th Avenue's northeast, kind of on the inbound direction into downtown. There, there's currently a few on-street parking spots in that location which would be repurposed into a bike lane. That, that project actually can be, is going to be done in collaboration with a stormwater utility project that is addressing a drainage issue in that location. So we'll, we'll try to combine the two efforts into one project. The third corridor is Northeast 2nd Street between 115th and Bellevue, 112th and Bellevue Way. It's a fairly wide corridor constructed largely as conditions of development approval as, as projects have come online along that corridor. So consequently, the, the character and the nature of that Northeast 2nd Street corridor is a little different as you proceed from 112th to Bellevue Way. And so again, corresponding to the context, the nature of the bike facility along that corridor will, will probably change depending on where you are. Fundamental to the commission's recommendation and the council's direction is to avoid repurposing of travel lanes. And a, as you heard in public comment earlier this evening, the draft design concept does in some places look to repurpose a travel lane or a turn lane or a center turn lane to provide the bicycle facility. The direction from council was clear and the commission's recommendation was also clear that we avoid doing that, so the final design will reflect the council direction. The, the commission provided that direction on, on these three corridors directly to the Director for Transportation, who has directed me to begin final design on these corridors and to implement them as soon as possible.
And that's it? So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then the verbal update that I wanted to provide to council, I want to draw council's attention to a few items on the consent agenda tonight, principally ordinance 6784. This is related to construction of a fire station 10 and that's because this is a significant public investment for the community and we're all eagerly anticipating the opening of this fire station to further advance the city's commitment to excellent public service. As a result of a discovery of additional ground contamination on the site, the construction site, in consultation with our environmental partners and in keeping with the city's commitment to sustainable practices in city buildings, the station will get an electric heating and ventilation system rather than a geothermal system, which maintains our commitment to clean energy. The consent approval covers costs of soil mitigation, redesign, material acquisition, and placement of a generator and upgraded electrical supply for approximately $10 million. We expect a modest delay of three to six months, making likely opening sometime in the second quarter of 2025. And in the near term, the interim budget transfers from other fire levy projects that are scheduled later in the CIP will allow this project to move forward. The funding needs of other fire department projects, including the projects of these transfers, will be a prominent part of the CIP process to meet the fire department's prioritization in the 2025, 26 budget. So thank you for allowing me to provide that additional information.
Great, thank you. You know, I'm, I, there's something I didn't say after public comment that I intended to say, and that is how much this council supports our police department. Our police department wakes up every morning willing to risk their lives to protect us, to educate us, and they perform community service every day as part of their job and part of their passion for this community. So I want you to know how much this council does support our police and our first responders. And with that, we will move on to council liaison recommendation. Councilmember Zhang, you have recommendation for three appointments to human services. Would you like to tell us about it?
Yes, should I move to appoint first and then comment?
Sure.
Okay, so I moved to appoint Delphina Medina to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring May 31, 2026. I also moved to appoint Edmund Wong to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring May 31, 2027. And lastly, I moved to appoint Angela Fan to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring May 31, 2025. Great. Love to hear multiple folks second that. We had a number of amazing candidates, so it was a really tough decision to fill the last three positions. For these three individuals, I'll just share a little bit about them. So Delphina Medina, 26 years in Bellevue, serving the, our community, focused on inclusive and affordable and safe places to live, helping the community navigate the many systems, especially for immigrants. She reiterated her interest in mental health and educating the community on resources that are available and we look forward to having her voice on the Human Services Commission. And then Edmund Wong, 15 years in Bellevue, public service as his core value, many years And then Edmund Wong, 15 years in Bellevue, public service as his core value, many years working in education, and many years in Bellevue in particular, principal at multiple schools. He spoke about recognizing that for a lot of folks there, we have to remove the barriers for access because folks don't even recognize that these resources are available, and that there's cultural aspects of not reaching out for help because culturally it's not something that they're used to. And then, really looking at data through an equity lens and grounded in the kids in our community and lifting their voices. And then, lastly, Angela Fan, 16 years in Bellevue, actually was on the Human Services Commission, although Councilmember Newan House, you're aware, moved away for several years and came back a year ago. So we're really looking forward to having her voice because, you know, until with these recent appointments, we only have two Human Services Commissioners at the beginning of this year, and so actually bringing her voice back means that we have someone that's gone through the grant process. She has lots of experience in the nonprofit organizations. She spoke about the needs of our youth, our seniors in transportation, ESL, and then really ensuring that sense of belonging in our community. And I think that between the three of them, they provide diversity of experiences and interests that will be a good complement to the five that we, or four that we currently have.
Great, thank you. Good recommendations. Any comments or discussion? All those in, oh sure, go ahead.
It's great to see Angela Fan come back, so great appointment, Councilmember Zahn. As you mentioned, I appointed her a number of years ago, and then she moved away. I think her husband's in the military, so great to see her come back and once again serve our community, so great choice, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Terrific. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So we are on to our public hearing. We're going to start with staff presentation. We'll have the public hearing, hear comments, we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves, and then hopefully we can move forward with something, the adoption of something. So I wonder if we should take a break? Should we take a break?
Okay, I can go on.
I'm just gonna, let's take a five-minute break here. I'm sorry to bring you up here and have to do that to you. Resume the meeting here, and, oh, sorry Rebecca, now we're going to resume the meeting. So as we said, we're here from the staff, have the public hearing, we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves, and then we'll make a decision, so go ahead.
I'll give a brief introduction, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, yes.
No problem. So this is related, this hearing is related to the interim official control that increased the residential floor area ratio downtown to incentivize affordable housing. The IOC is currently set to expire in May, and staff's going to share information about the additional outreach conducted since this was last before the council, as well as some proposed updates to the IOC vesting language. So from Development Services Department, we have Rebecca Horner, the Director, Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Director, and Matthew Menard, Senior Planner. And Nick is going to kick this off, I believe.
Great, thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and City Council. We are here tonight asking the council to hold a public hearing on the Next Right Work Phase One Downtown Interim Official Control. We have a couple of options this evening for you to select from, and Matthew will cover those in more detail in the presentation. So for our agenda, we want to cover the background of this item, talk about the objectives related to this interim official control, and then Matthew will walk us through the current utilization of the interim official control, give us a refresher of what's included in that IOC, and then what the proposed changes are that you'll be discussing this evening. So to start with some of the background, this really was related to the Next Right Work effort. So in July of 2022, the City Council prioritized five actions that would be designed to increase the production of both market rate housing in the city, and then seek those opportunities to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. On April 23rd, the council initiated the work to increase the floor area ratio for residential development, and this was determined to be a phased approach. So the first phase being an interim official control that relates to just downtown, and then the Phase Two work is our permanent land use code amendment that's underway, and that will relate to all the mixed-use areas throughout the city, including downtown. So tonight, we're focusing on the Phase One interim official control. So our timeline here, this would be the third IOC extension, if council chooses to extend this evening. The first interim official control was adopted in May, and that ran for a period of six months. This IOC was renewed or extended for another six months in October of 2023. At that time, there was some discussion about changing the vesting language within the IOC, and some direction provided to staff to look at how that could be modified to accommodate the four projects that had vested to the interim official control. So that brings us to tonight. We have provided some modifications to the vesting language, and then we have a couple of options for you all to consider. One of those options is to extend by six months. If that was the decision, then the expiration would be in November of 2024, that's what's shown on the timeline. The current interim official control is set to expire on May 18th. So the objective of this downtown interim official control is to quickly respond to some of those application-ready projects. We're also viewing this as a way to test an FAR increase and measure that against some of the policy objectives. The aim was also to encourage residential development and uptake of our affordable housing incentive that existed in the code but was recalibrated as part of this interim official control, and then with the aim of increasing some of the affordable housing production in downtown. So as mentioned, the IOC is set to expire on May 18th. So I'll turn this over to Matthew to walk us through the IOC.
Thanks, Nick. So with the IOC, I will go into some specifics of what that does and how that's different from the downtown current code. So we've increased the FAR exemption for affordable housing. Under our current downtown code, for every one square foot of affordable housing, you get 2.5 square feet of market rate housing exempt from your total FAR, so that can be over the FAR limit for the project. With the IOC, we've increased that exemption for every one square foot of affordable housing. You're allowed to exempt four square feet of market rate housing. We've also provided some flexibility in the perimeter overlay, so those areas around the edges of downtown, if you provide 0.5 FAR of that exempt area, so that 20% affordable housing, you're allowed a 25-foot height increase, a 15-foot set step-back reduction, and a 5% lock coverage increase. We've also eliminated parking minimums for affordable housing and allowed projects to move FAR within their sites. What we've found is that in the perimeter overlay, our form standards are quite restrictive, and developers were not able to get the entirety of their FAR limit out of that perimeter overlay. So with this, we've allowed developers within a single site, so not transferring between sites, but within a single development site, to move that unutilized FAR from the perimeter overlay to outside the perimeter overlay, not exceeding the maximum total FAR for the whole site. We have seen four projects take us up on this IOC so far, so those four projects are vested to the IOC. They do include about 2,200 market rate units and about 120 affordable units. I will note, those numbers are very preliminary and are very much subject to change at this point. These are all very recent projects and are in the early part of permitting. As Nick mentioned at the October hearing, we were asked to come back with some updates to the vesting language based on some comments we had heard from the development community with concerns that the vesting language was not long enough to allow them to complete their projects, and we would lose out on these units and these affordable housing units. So we have done so with these ordinances that we've provided you this evening. We've updated the vesting language in the IOC to be consistent with the land use code. The land use code allows a project to vest their master development plan for up to 10 years at a director discretion, so that would be at the discretion of the Development Services Director, and it's going to be based on the size and complexity of projects. It's not our common practice to give that 10-year period, but it allows that flexibility and that discretion from the department to grant the time we feel appropriate it is to vest for these projects based on how large they are. The old IOC, or the current IOC, I should say, has a hard cutoff date of two years of vesting for the affordable housing provisions of the IOC, so this would give potentially a much longer vesting period for those projects and for those affordable housing units in those projects. We have provided two options for you this evening. Option A would be to update the vesting language as I just described and extend the IOC for an additional six months until November of 2024. I will note, we've had some public comment recently requesting that we do extend the IOC. It sounds like there's one project at this point that may be ready to come in and vest to the IOC, so extending it would allow more projects to vest to the IOC. We've heard specific interest from one, there may be more in that six-month period. We haven't heard any other specific interest. Option B, which is the recommended option, is to modify the vesting language but do not extend the IOC. This means that any project that were to use the IOC would have to vest before the expiration date, so they'd have to submit an application, a complete application to us prior to May 18th. The considerations for that, this vesting change has responded to the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. That council directed us to look at and come back with some updates to make sure those projects could happen. It does ensure that any future projects that are going to happen downtown will have to meet our permanent code. As Nick mentioned, we are updating Phase Two of the permanent code right now, which may have different provisions for affordable housing, so ensuring that those projects meet any future affordable housing codes that we update. Again, projects submitted after May 17th would not vest, so if you were to not extend and take option B, that would preclude likely that one project we've heard interest from from vesting. Public comment has essentially said that they would not be able to vest in time, so we would lose out on that one project and any residential units that are associated with that project. We do think from a staff perspective, we have gotten great data from this IOC to move forward with Phase Two. Really what we've found is that some of the form relaxations and the FAR movement, the FAR movement, is likely more enticing than the updates to the bonus ratio. So it gives us a good foundation to move forward with as we do our economic analysis for Phase Two, and we start doing code writing for Phase Two and bring that to the public as well. We did reach out to all four stakeholder teams that have utilized this IOC. All of them were supportive of this change. We have heard, and I think you've heard as well, there are some concerns that are sort of unrelated to the IOC with design review vesting. That's beyond the scope of this project and is really a permanent land use code issue, but we have heard that from some developers. We do think with the way it's written now, any MDP and design review that's submitted at the same time should vest for the same periods, but we are hearing some concerns with phased projects, so just so for your awareness. We did also reach out to the Chamber of Commerce's Plush Committee, Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition, and the Bellevue Downtown Association with this project as well, as they were important stakeholders in the original adoption of the IOC. With that, the direction that we are requesting this evening is to hold the public hearing, discuss and adopt one of the options that we have provided for you. With that, Merrill, hand it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. So we're going to go ahead and have the public hearing, and then we can have a discussion and ask staff questions. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. There are four people registered for the public hearing, and before I start calling names, I will make a note for the council that there were two written comments that are included in your desk packet this evening for this public hearing. With that, our first speaker is Cindy Ju.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Cindy Ju, and I'm with Heinz. We're the developers of the Main Street Place Mixed Use Project Downtown. I wanted to first thank the City Council and Development Services staff for recognizing the importance of the IOC to address the severe housing shortage we are facing in Bellevue. Heinz, and particularly our development project in downtown Bellevue, is one of the users of the IOC, a critical tool that has enabled us to move forward with our mixed-use project. Our project is expected to deliver over 400 units of much-needed transit-adjacent market-rate and affordable housing. Specifically, we're using Section 2 relating to affordable FAR and Section 3 relating to FAR transfer. These provisions allowed us to grow the housing portion of our project and accelerate its delivery, thereby maximizing housing near the East Main Station transit mode. We encourage you to both extend the IOC through November and ask staff to bring back an ordinance that, at a minimum, makes Section 3 relating to FAR transfer permanent. Section 3 gets us to where the council and planning commissioners intended us to be when they adopted the original code, and reinforces Bellevue's commitment to encourage housing development in downtown Bellevue. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
My name is Alex Zimmerman. I know housing business like my five finger, because thirty years ago I bring class action behalf of 500 families, and after this I stay in nice business. This plan, what is we have, is a typical government crux, and so Bellevue crux only work with corporation as a clean fascism, no question, classic fascism. In this plan, I see everything, because I'm like a businessman, you know what it means? I don't talk, no, we need make more money, we need make exactly thousand bucks, we need make exactly $5,000. We possibly spend thousand bucks. Her plan is a fake, it's a crux.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to speak to what's on the agenda, which is this IOC.
Exactly, I speak about agenda, I speak about the plan and about affordable housing. You see this?
We're talking about the IOC tonight, whether or not to extend it.
Yes, exactly, I'm talking about affordable housing. This affordable housing.
Affordable housing is not on the agenda.
You speak English, affordable housing.
The IOC is what's on the agenda, whether or not to extend it.
You want, what is I speak, what is they talking? What is you want from me?
I'd like you to speak to the agenda item, which is the extension or not of the IOC, okay?
Yeah, this agenda item about affordable housing and official control, is it an agenda?
The interim official control, whether or not we extend it.
Super, I will speak about this, no problem. Where is you see official control? Government for thirty years I cannot find one honest man who work for government.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, I don't think you understand what that interim official control is.
No, it's exactly what is they talking, but you don't understand my English, because affordable control from government, who never have one honest man, cannot be controlled by. You understand what is I mean? Affordable housing, what is they talking right now? It's a pure fake, it's no one figure here. How many houses now, how many houses will be last, next year? How many will cost housing? $3,000 for two bedroom? Yeah, it's affordable housing. I go in check in Bellevue many time, I'm low income.
You're still not speaking to the agenda item, okay? So this is your last warning, and then I'm going to ask you to leave.
You don't like me, principal. 99, 90 percentage good, give me chance, be a bad. You supposed to be one bad man, instead, for 150,000 idiot, yeah? Can I be one bad man with different opinion? Can? Please, give me the chance, yeah, for another 20 seconds, be a bad man from 99, 99, good people. You're very interesting kinds of, addictive, idiot, I talked about this many times.
The next speaker on the list is Jessie Clausen.
Okay, back to our public hearing speakers. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm Jessie Clausen, McCullough Hill. I'm here to speak in favor of Option A tonight, which would extend the ordinance for another six months. We've already talked about the additional project that is in the queue to take advantage of the IOC. That's known as the John L. Scott Project, and it was actually one of the projects originally contemplated. And it was actually one of the projects originally contemplated a year ago to potentially take advantage of the IOC. We need just a few more months to get our application in. There have been a couple of developers that have looked at the site and now we have a developer that is going to be able to actually apply. We actually only need four months, we think, to submit the application, but we are fine with Option A, which would extend it for another six months. I'm a land use attorney. I do make it my business to know whether there are projects in the pipeline. I am not aware of any additional projects that would be able to come in within six months. As you know, applications for administrative design review are quite substantial and take a lot of work to get ready. So the developer tonight, who will speak after me, has invested a lot of time and money in these permit drawings, so would really appreciate the extension so that he can get in. The project would include 344 residential units across the street from the East Main Light Rail Station, 12 units at 65% AMI, which is low-income housing, and 59 units at 80% AMI, again, right across the street from Light Rail. Clearly, the IOC is working to encourage more housing development in downtown and it is encouraging more affordable housing in downtown. This is a success. So we do encourage you to extend it and hopefully, when we get to the Phase Two, make some of the provisions permanent because we deeply encourage council to incentivize the production of housing and affordable housing. So please adopt Option A. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Alan Cantlin.
Council members, city staff, my name's Alan Cantlin. I am with the Tremble Co. Company. Jessie is far better spoken than I, so I will be super quick. I don't have a lot to add. We are indeed the developer of the John L. Scott Building on Main Street across from the Light Rail Station. 344-unit project. We're two or three months in and, as she mentioned, could probably pull it off in four, six would be a little bit of breathing room. Extension would allow us to get and invest under the IOC and provide 12 additional units at 65 AMI. It's actually 57 units at 80% AMI for a total of 69 affordable housing units, which, you know, I think is the most logical place for him is across the street from the Light Rail Station. We urge you to approve that extension and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That is the end of our preregistered list. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone joining us in council chambers who would like to make a comment regarding this public hearing. Please raise your hand. That goes for those online as well. If you would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. Do you have one hand online and that's Heidi Dean? Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can, Sharmeen. Thank you.
Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Heidi Dean, I hadn't planned to speak, but I was looking at the agenda tonight. Just in regards to the no minimum parking requirements, I get a little frustrated sometimes because there seems to be, in this city, an assumption that people who are low-income, that they don't drive, that they don't need a car and that simply locating a project close to the light rail will take care of their needs and therefore you don't need to have any parking spaces for them. And if you've never been low-income, I grew up low-income. My best friend was low-income for many, many years. And generally, people do need a car and they do need places to park those cars. What was interesting is earlier this year, as part of the Bellevue Essentials Alumni Coffees that we have monthly, one of the speakers was Lindsay Masters from Arch. And the question that I asked her was, what percentage of your Arch clients would you assume have a need for cars? They drive cars and she said it was about 90% of those folks living in Arch units. So I don't want to tell you what to do, but just please take that into consideration that more and more we're seeing parking eliminated. And what is the return on investment for that? I know that a lot of our developers are saying, you know, it's expensive to develop parking. But what happens when you don't put parking there? Whether it's for the market-rate housing or the affordable housing units? Where do those folks go? Because I can tell you up in Newport Hills, where I live, we have, you know, the Newporter that has affordable units there. We've got the YWCA 12 units there and a bunch of the townhomes that also take Section Eight. And when there's not enough parking, it goes out into the neighborhoods and, you know, people's circles. So, for example, that unit that they're talking about, you could end up with people then going out into the Suri Downs neighborhood because they don't have parking there. It becomes very competitive. So please take that into consideration. Low-income doesn't mean you don't need a car. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our list and I do not see any additional hands. One final call out in chambers. Okay, no additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have staff back to ask any questions that we may have. Council members, I'm going to start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for doing that due diligence that you do so well to make sure that we, when we're ready to, with the options in front of us, that we really understand what they are and also the development community for giving us that feedback. I have Page Six in front of me because I think that it's really good to be re-grounded in what the objective was for the downtown IOC. And I am really glad to hear that you've gotten important data from the IOC that we now have for one year, which is one of the pieces. I am generally supportive of Option A because when I think about encouraging residential development and increasing affordable housing production, that that is also a goal. And when I hear about a project that's already invested amount of time to move forward with getting to the administrative design review and they need just a little bit more time to get there, I'm inclined to make sure that we get to a yes, yes, that is important to us in both the data collection for the permanent and the goal of trying to incent those shovel-ready projects. My only question would be that Option A is for a six-month extension and I understand that that last project is likely only to need four. So is the option in front of us A or is there an A point, A1 for this? Or can you help with that?
I do believe that the mayor has been provided motion language for a four-month extension if you all did want to go down that route. So if there is an A point one, we could call it, that would allow a four-month extension and you could do that from the dais tonight.
Okay, great. Well, I look forward to hearing from my colleagues and appreciate the mayor for having that foresight already. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
I mean, we've said a lot of things and you've covered a lot of things and I'm not sure that we're all understanding the differences between the two. There have been some comments that if we do A, that is going to cause some problems. It's not as effective longer. That, but B seems to be viewed as something kind of too little to go on. And when you made the talk about, you really didn't just, I didn't think, you really laid out what the two differences, what would be the results of following A and B? And you could do it with the option that you mentioned on A. And with a group that's ready to go, wanting to go the shorter route seems to me very appealing. And this is not something that's going to have any big impact on going forward. It's something to work on now and we can do other things going forward.
Councilmember Stokes, can I rephrase you about? You're asking a very good question.
Yeah.
Maybe staff could go over the difference between Option B and Option A with a four-month extension.
Right. Thank you.
The biggest difference on a policy level is Option B would not allow future projects to vest unless they were submitted to us in the next few weeks, whereas Option A would allow that one project that we've heard and potentially other projects. But there, it sounds like there is not likely that there are more to vest to the IOC. So by not allowing future projects to vest, they would either have to vest under our current downtown code or that future downtown code, which may have different provisions for affordable housing. So the trade-off is by allowing the project to vest to the IOC, you get that certainty that this project's going to vest in those number of units. The trade-off with that is if we have different or more substantial or higher levels of affordability requirements with Phase Two, you lose out on those units. There's certainly no certainty with that. We haven't drafted that code yet. We're still in the economic analysis phase of that. We will be doing a robust public process with that, as you'd expect. We'll bring it back to you. We'll bring it to planning commission. So there's no certainty in that regard, but you are losing out on that project being required to meet those permanent codes rather than this temporary ordinance.
That's assuming that the permanent codes are different.
Correct.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
One point. I don't see anything that would prevent us from doing the same thing for either one of these going forward. This is not going to, unless we say if we adopt A, then we're going to keep the language and we're not going to do anything else with it. Both of these are temporary in effect and we're working on this. And the goal is, what I think we're really working hard on is getting something done now and getting more affordable housing. And that's why my concern is that the going to the longer and the more complex piece and relying on more language than the first, the shorter one, that we're kind of, we have a tendency to push it off again. I would like to see us do something that really motivates us and puts us in a position saying, let's get this done. We have something that's really, it's something in the pan. It's already frying.
So, Councilmember Stokes, bring it up. Another good question. I'm going to rephrase just a little bit. Can you talk about if we revert back to the original code? So if we don't extend the IOC that we put in that has been actually creating affordable housing and we go back to the original code, which really wasn't creating any affordable housing? Can you just talk about the difference? Because that's, Option B would have us go back to the original language.
Absolutely. So the projects would have to meet that original ratio for FAR, for affordable housing. So it would go back to, for every one square foot of market or of affordable housing provided you were exempting 2.5 square feet instead of four square feet of market-rate housing. They would also lose their flexibility in the perimeter overlay for some of those form standards. So they'd have to meet all of our current codes. So there'd be no provision for that height bump or the step-back reduction. And there'd be no provision for the parking reduction as well. And our current code does not allow you to move FAR from one district to a different district like we're allowing with IOC. So the projects would not be able to move their FAR around. We've seen with the existing projects that we have in, not being able to move FAR around has been a real deal-breaker for those projects. So I think that's been really the most important piece of the IOC that projects have been utilizing.
Okay, thank you. So, just hold on. So.
Well, I'm still.
Why don't you think on that and we'll go to the next council. I was going to go Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. I just have one question and overall, I don't have any problem with what Mayor already proposed and councilmembers on also mentioned to extend it for four months to let the affordable housing that the developer wants to achieve happens. We need housing and if we need affordable housing and any units that they add, I think is a win situation. My only question is, what would be the negative consequence of extending? Beside, I know you said it was a year pilot, we got the information we need. I got the fact that we may, if we have a, if we have a better affordability incentive, we may lose that. I understand that's part two. But is there any other negative for the city of Bellevue or for our code by extending it for six months?
Six months, okay.
I would say there's not too many significant negatives. It is a little bit more difficult to administer a temporary ordinance, right? When you're doing permit review and you're looking back 10 years at an ordinance that was around for a year, it's slightly more difficult on an administrative aspect, but that's not a substantial drawback. I think the two you've mentioned, the two we've talked about, are the two significant trade-offs.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any issue with extending that for another four months.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. We've got something good going already. This IOC has proven that met our objective, you know, more, more units and more affordable housing. So it's happening. So why screw up with something that's already working? You know, I don't see the difference between extending six months or four months or whatever. You just said that, you know, maybe a little bit of administrative thing. But it's all working, you know? It's opportunity waiting to do the permanent change. You can do that anyway, right? So we know that, we're talking about this one project, maybe need four months. But if this other project coming, why shoot them down? Why not? Why not accept them? This IOC has been proven. You've already proven it. You've got numbers to show. So let's a good thing go. There's no reason. Unless, like Deputy Mayor asks, if there's anything detrimental if you extend longer, but it doesn't seem to be. So why fool around with anything that's already working? And we heard from the developers, it may take four months, two months, three months, doesn't matter. Give me enough time. Somebody might come in with five months, six months, you know? So we don't want it? No, we want it, right? Because we did this IOC thing. It's working. Nothing has changed. So I support Option B. Is it A?
No, A. You want A.
I support A's.
And then you're like, four, are you okay with the four months?
Why fool around with it?
You're saying six months.
What's the difference?
Well, can you explain, I mean, we can, me who are for that can explain it if you want.
I do have a question. Why do you recommend the other option? That's all. I want to hear you. Thank you.
So we recommended the other option. From a staff perspective, we've gotten the data we need out of this. That was the objective of the IOC. The other objective was to allow those shovel-ready projects to get moving forward. The IOC's been in place for a year now. We have four of those shovel-ready projects that have moved forward. So we do think that it's appropriate to end the IOC. There's not, I don't think we see a huge drawback in extending it for four or six months. There's probably not a big difference in those two numbers. But from a staff perspective and from the objectives of the IOC, I think we've achieved those objectives. So from our perspective, it's ready to be expired.
Can I make a comment? It's the right objective. It's something good. So even if I accomplished it, let's keep it going. Unless it's not good, you don't know it is. Then say, why? Let's shut it off. You're not going to shut it down. I haven't heard that. Let's keep going. Thank you.
Okay, I think I'll go next because I'm, what I say may clarify why I think we should do a four months instead of six months and then we can all weigh in on our own opinions on things. I think that the temporary IOC that we have now that we're talking about renewing has been successful. I think that we, you know, originally were concerned that development would stall in these properties because of the plans to do office and that shifting to do more residential. We want more residential. We put in an incentive for affordable housing. And from what you're saying, we're getting affordable housing where with the other code, the original code, we were not getting. People were not taking us up on the incentive, so we were not getting the affordable housing. So that's the good news. The thing is, though, we're not getting as much affordable housing as we need. We are in a housing crisis. And when you look at the, for most of these projects that are developing under the current IOC, we're only getting 5% of the total units as affordable. It may be 20% of the extra space that they can have, but it's, it amounts to only 5% of the total project. It's better than nothing, but we need to be building far more than that. So I think that when we look at a permanent code, which is what staff is pulling together and recommending, I imagine we're going to have more stronger incentives that will bring us more affordable housing than just 5% of the project. And, you know, I know the Trammell Crowe project, actually, the full thing is 20% of the units almost, 20% being made affordable, which I really appreciate. So they're kind of going above and beyond what's necessary for right now. But I envision that when we do a permanent code, that we will be trying to get 20% of the entire project to be affordable housing because we have to do that. Otherwise, we're not going to meet the goals that we have with the population growth that we're anticipating and our economic growth. So I don't want the temporary IOC to last so long that we get a bunch of projects vesting on a minimum affordable housing. I want to, I hope staff actually comes back with an affordable housing recommendation in four months that we can maybe implement at that time before we do the entire thing. I don't know if that's possible, but I, I'm asking you that, actually. But that's why I'm for the four months instead of six months. And that's why I'm for extending it because it's more successful than the original code. So is it possible that in four months' time, staff might have an affordable housing recommendation that we can amend the IOC and then continue it then?
So Mayor Robinson, thanks for those comments and the question there about if we could accelerate kind of a portion of the phase-two work to bring something for you all in four months' time. I will just say it's going to be very challenging, if not just kind of impossible from a staff perspective, to work with that timeframe because of the economic analysis that's needed and that is underway right now. We have a really important meeting with stakeholders later this month on a key milestone of that economic analysis work. But we want to ensure that there is that time for meaningful engagement around the affordable housing approach for downtown specifically. We also have a complicated system in downtown. And so we want to be able to understand how this works or interacts with all of the other expectations of projects relating to public realm specifically. And so the four months is probably too aggressive, but we hear and appreciate kind of the urgency of getting something to you all soon. So we would be looking at different timeline options potentially, but June is kind of what we set out for the citywide. But this certainly kind of helps us think about how we might even phase the phase-two work to try and move a little quicker on the downtown piece.
Well, let me ask you this then. I heard that if we extend it for six months with the affordable housing requirements that we have in the temporary IOC and that in six months' time, this is our third extension, right? So will that be 18 months of those affordable housing requirements? That it will then be difficult to increase the requirements at that time. But I understood that maybe four months, it wouldn't be quite as hard to do that. So I guess after four months, we could relax, we could go back, let it expire and then re-up it. And that would at least give developers a four-months window for those who are ready to submit. So I'm still, I'm for the four-month option, just seeing my opinion. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you. I'm in favor of option A. You know, it's in alignment with our principles, our directives previously on this. We need more production. We've all sat here and have said that many times of this housing crisis that we find ourselves in. So let's go. You know, by extending to November 2024, six months, which is my understanding from staff is the preference is to have six months, not four months if we are to extend it tonight. So I defer to them on that. I can live with the four months. But, you know, this is more than just extending this IOC. This is about sending a message as well that we want to be partners with these developers to create more housing in our city. And us going back and forth about two months seems rather silly to me. Let's get this 300-plus production done. Let's get the 69 affordable units done and get it in our, in our city. I mean, this is a company that's already invested $2 million into this project. And if we don't extend it, they're probably going to walk away. Why, why would we want that to happen in our city? As well as the message that we're not a great city to partner with when we were creating housing in the city. So I can live, again, I can live with the four months, but let's give them a little bit of breathing room that they're looking for. There's no, as staff has said, there's no other projects that'll come through. It's just this one. So I'm not sure why we're so concerned about two months. I'm not sure why we're so concerned about just extending the six months to get more housing inventory in our city, which we have all said we want to see. So, so that's my perspective. And, you know, I really hope we can send that message tonight that we extended the six months and we can get going on this project and get more people who want to live in Bellevue that can afford it at the, what, 65 or 80% AMI or at the market rate. But thank you, staff, for all the great work that you've done on this. Really appreciate it and really appreciate your perspective. But I'm in favor of option A tonight.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and all this work. This is really complicated stuff. So thank you for that. What happens if we get to the four months and they haven't been able to submit? Is this just drop dead? You know, this is the cutoff date and we're not taking any late work.
After, if the council chooses to extend this by four months and the application isn't submitted, then yes, they would have to apply under the current land use code. And so there would be no way to accept that project under the IOC unless they were to reach out to you all and you directed us to extend it beyond that four months to accommodate the project.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the comments, certainly the mayor and Councilmember Newenhouse, for sure. I think, you know, 69 additional affordable housing units. I mean, that's more than 50% of what we've been able to accomplish so far with the IOC. So I would say, I mean, absolutely, you know, this affordable housing's needed. I think, I do think, you know, six months, I'd like a little bit of wiggle room. I don't want to lose out on this. I'm not sure that would happen. I could live with the four months. You know, so I, but I think, you know, and where the development is, the difficulty we've had with that particular one, the John L. Scott Building. So definitely in favor of it and the chance to add this significant amount of affordable housing is just something that I feel we have to support. So I would say option A would, you know, maybe give a little extra breathing room. But if, and I think that Trammell Crowe's been clear that four months, they can do it. I think I'd be okay with that as well. Thank you.
So I'm going to just say that when you talk about the value of having affordable housing, right now, as the IOC's written, we're getting 5% of all the units affordable for most of these projects. So that's not impressive. The goal is always, the typical goal in a city is 20%. And so, you know, allowing more time to vest under this one that only is providing 5% is not necessarily a win for the city. So I'm just going to say for our pro-affordable-housing people to think on that. So Councilmembers Zahn, let's just go around the table again.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate hearing from my colleagues. I would say that, you know, what I keep thinking about is that that is 20% affordable housing units, I believe with the MFTE, so it got to 20%. And that is important. It is literally TOD, right across the street from the light rail station. And at the same time, I'm also thinking about the fact that this is an IOC. It is not a permanent code. And so the fact that we've already been in it a year, and as I understand it from the developer, the four months actually did include some float and contingency in it already. So for me, I think of the four months as actually working with our partner and finding that balance between adding the four months so that that project can come in and be vested and also honoring the fact that this is an IOC. So it's not intended to stretch on for a long period of time because we've already been a month into it. I guess the part that I think about is that, and the piece I'd like you to clarify, my understanding is that the check mark that says you're in, you're done, actually is not just when they submit that application. It includes the staff review that has a certain number of days. So can you talk about our own commitment to the fact that our piece of that will be done so that we, if we did choose the four months, that we actually are going to do our own due diligence to do the expedited review so that they don't miss the check mark?
So with the IOC, it does work slightly differently than our land use code. The way the IOC vesting is written is once they submit a complete application. So we don't need to do a staff review like we would with a normal application.
Okay, so that might be one that, as I understood from the development community, maybe that wasn't what they understood it to be. So I just want to make sure that I was, we're all clear about when we say four months, what do we actually mean? And what I'm hearing you say, and I see kind of some head shaking in the back, is that when the developer submits that, that package that satisfies our administrative design review, that is considered satisfying the IOC. Is, just one more time.
We will need to review it to make sure it's complete. So they have to submit a complete application. They can't submit sort of a partial application to us. So there is some review on our end, but it's not that full review that you would normally see. So there is some time in there. Nick, I don't know if you want to add anything to that as well.
Well, I would just add.
Councilmembers Zahn, for this specific project, they have been engaged with the city in pre-development services. So we've had some conversations with them or city staff have had conversations with them. They are preparing to submit their formal application and that is the point at which they would vest under the interim official control. But they have been working on this site and in conversation with the city for a while. But this, the app, the formal application has not been submitted as of yet.
Okay. Well, because ultimately, we're not, this is not a test so that they, we want them to succeed, right? So the idea is that, you know, my mind balancing not extending the IOC for a long period of time with creating sufficient time for success. So, thanks.
Just to refresh everybody, I think everybody's good with option A. We're kind of talking about extending it for the four months versus the six months.
And, yeah, I think so. I mean, this is, is there only one potential developer that's going to be involved in this? Is that, that's the answer, right? At this point?
That's what we're hearing at this point.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I think what is, I agree with that. I think that's, I think there's something we can do and the, it's, will be a, something that is very important to have this milestone of actually getting the number of affordable housing on this and what they're talking about. The other factor is, and what I hope to see out of this, is that we, that we recognize that we are dealing with something that is not going to just go along as we'd go along. And, and we can, from the council's standpoint, do everything we can to help staff have the facility to do this and put this together. But this is a crisis and this is one thing we can do. It's not taking away from the other, any other proposals and things or way to look at things. And I think this is going, this will be good for us in terms of focusing. And then we can work on going forward in a, in a more comprehensive fashion and know that we have the community, we have the council, we have, I think the developers really want to be in part of this. So we, this to me is becoming something, it's a, it's a, an opening of a door that we've been working, knocking on for a long time in terms of our commitment to affordable housing in this. And so I think that's, I think we can do that. In the same time, the, the developers or the programs under option V, B can go along too. I mean, that's, it's not either or when it comes down to it. And I think we can work around that. So I'm, I'm ready to go with that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I lost my list. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you again. I am super aligned with what Councilmember Zahn and Mayor has been mentioning. I think we have a IOC that we are going to extend for four months to accommodate the only developer that has not been able to submit. And I am looking forward to our lesson learned from this IOC and what comes out of this for our permanent code that hopefully we are going to add more affordable housing, incentivizing our developer to such, to a win-win situation that we can have more affordable housing. So I don't have any problem to extend this for another four months.
And just to clarify legally, we're not doing this just for one developer. We're doing this for any developer who wants to come in and take opportunity, advantage of the extension within that timeframe. Let's see, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Oh, you heard everybody, you know. And I just believe that we got something already working. Two months doesn't make that much of a difference. You're already working on the code, whatever you want to do. I heard Mayor mention 5%. It's not as good as 20%, you know, but we're getting pretty good. Even at 20%, it's better than zero. If we don't treat our partner well, if we let them miss our deadline, for some reason, they can get in here. You know, that's not the way to collaborate. That's not the way to have partnership. We've got to understand, you know, make sure that they make it. If they don't for whatever reason, we don't have even the 5%, nothing. So that, that doesn't make sense. So I really believe, you know, Councilmember Gerald House put it very well. We have to show our developers that we are respecting them. We have good faith. We're not losing anything. We are not. You know, our code is still working. Two months doesn't make that much of a difference. Unless you say, hey, we're going to get it tomorrow. Okay, maybe there's a difference. I don't think so. And it's up to the developer, the community. And if we treat them right, if we do it and they have to make, they know better. How long does it take to get it into the door, like you were saying? We cannot force them. They have their capacity. They've got other things to do. So we need to respect that. And they are asking for six months. What's the benefit for them? No, it doesn't. They're not greedy, right? They're not going to make more money? No. Right? They just want to be sure they are vested so that they can help us to accomplish our goal. Our goal is to have more units of housing and more affordable housing. And that can be accomplished within what we're talking about. Give them the time to extend it and allow us to develop our code by learning what we can learn. This may also be an experience, you know. This is part of experience. This is new. So we're doing it. So I believe that it makes sense to give them six months. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Newenhouse.
I guess I'll just reiterate my preference for the six months. I think Councilmember Lee and Hamilton and Stokes have all mentioned it as well for the reasons why six months make, make sense.
I didn't hear Councilmember Stokes say six months.
Okay. I don't want to speak for him, but I thought that's what I heard.
I think if we could do six months, that's fine. I don't think that's a deal breaker.
Great. Thank you.
Are you done? Okay. Good job.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I, we need this project to really make the IOC, kind of to rehabilitate it in my mind. 118 affordable housing units is good. It's 118 more than we had. But without these 69, I don't think that there's enough value here in it. So for sure, we need to extend it. We need a lot more affordable housing. Certainly agree with the mayor and all of my colleagues here that that's a priority. If four months, which is what the developer on this project is, says is going to work for them, we need this project. And if that works for them, it works for me. I don't have an issue with six months. But look, if four kind of gets things going and, and we keep moving on, then it's great. And this project, I think, is critical. So happy to support either way there.
Okay. Is that everybody? Okay. I don't know if I spoke or not. So I just reiterate, I'm very comfortable with the four months. I think that's a happy medium. I think that, that suits the affordable housing people who are very strong advocates and really want stronger incentives, want stronger code. And I think it suits our developers who are midway in their process and we don't. and we don't want to um make it so they have to change all their plans. So at this, at this point, so um what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask the Deputy Ma- Mayor to make a motion and then uh, so go ahead and then ask for an amendment.
I move to adopt ordinance six, seven, eight, five. Option A, extending and modifying a temporary and interim official control on sections twenty dot twenty-five A zero six zero and twenty dot twenty-five A zero seven zero of the land use code to increase the residential floor area in exchange for the provision of affordable housing. Allow development flexibility when meeting certain affordable housing thresholds and provide projects with flexibility in utilizing FAR in downtown perimeter overlay within a single project limit in order to encourage residential development, providing for vesting to this temporary and interim official control, reserving the right to adopt permanent regulations. And I don't mind to make a-
Second.
Okay, so that's the second, and then we have an amendment?
I move to amend ordinance six, seven, eight, five. Option A to provide for a four-month extension through September eighteen, twenty twenty-four rather than a six-month extension.
Second.
Okay, so let's uh vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
So, well, I can't tell who, so Councilmember Stokes, was that aye?
Aye.
And you're, okay, so I guess I should say any opposed, sorry. Okay, thank you. All right, um, and now we'll vote on the full.
I didn't ask any opposed.
I just did. Any opposed? Okay, that's okay. All right, so that's passes six, one. And then uh the full ordinance, uh, we, that has already been moved. All those in favor of passing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So you're for passing it. Okay, all right, great. So that passes seven, oh. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think we'll take a, a break till eight fifteen. Okay, we're gonna resume the meeting. Um, we have one study session item and uh, um, Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce it?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This presentation is on the next steps for formally establishing an arts facility grants program. As part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, council allocated funds to cultural arts, arts and cultural facilities through a CIP project. Um, and that would support this grant program uh to be available for both existing and emerging arts organizations. So we have um a great trio here from our community and uh development department. Jesse Canado, Chief Economic Development Officer, Lori Hoffman, our Arts and Creative Economy Manager, and Manette Stam, Arts Program Analyst. And Jesse is going to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We're really excited to be presenting tonight's recommendation on the new cultural facilities grant. Uh, it is an important next step in implementing several elements of the economic development plan focused on arts, creative economy, and tourism. It's also an important next step in getting dollars out into the community to help create spaces and places that provide opportunities for our community to gather and help improve a sense of community belonging here in Bellevue. And it's also an important next step in helping maintain our status as the cultural heart of the East Side here in Bellevue. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Lori and Manette to talk about the details.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. Um, we'll go through a fairly quick presentation and we are seeking some direction from council tonight to return on consent with three ordinances that will help um make these grants a reality. One to establish each of the two grants and then one to give um, to expand the purview of the Arts Commission to recommend those grants. Fairly tight agenda for you tonight. We'll look at our community need, some analysis, we'll propose the program, look at some eligibility and parameter details, and then we'll look at our process. So community need, there is a high need for arts and cultural facilities on the East Side, particularly in Bellevue. These facilities um are often quite expensive and are very bespoke. So not only do we need facilities, we need facilities that are going to be a little bit more expensive to build. And often that responsibility falls to nonprofit organizations. When you combine that with the rising cost of land acquisition and building here in our community, it makes it really tough to deliver the facilities that we need. And then abo- beyond delivering new facilities, the facilities that we have are often in need of repair or expansion or renovation. In the photo in front of you, you see the cast of the recent production of Addams Family from Theater Thirty-Three in our Bell Red Arts District. This is the cast in their green room. So this is the space that they have for the entire cast to get ready to perform. And there's no bathroom in that green room. So at intermission, if they need to use the facilities, they go through the lobby and through the guests in full makeup and costume to use the restroom in the front of house. Um, it gets the job done, but we could invest a bit. And how do we know that we need these facilities? It's because Bellevue does our homework. We have, and most of the screen in front of you, you can see a list of recent studies we have completed, all of which outline the need for a broad constellation of small and medium-sized arts facilities so that we can build towards larger facilities in the future. So what do we propose tonight is two programs. So one is a capital projects grant and one is a capital maintenance grant. Those do have some fine detail between the two of them um on a staff administrative side, but they will present to our community as a unified grant. So if you are a cultural provider and you wanna be um get new stage lights, depending on a couple like details, that might be capital, that might be maintenance, staff will help guide them into the right program. They will have a unified bucket of funding and we will allocate between the two of them. So for our users, for our cultural providers, that will seem like one unified experience. But you will see two um ordinances. Let's see, the selection process that you'll see for these grants will be very similar to the current art grants that you already have annually and we'll outline that in a little bit more detail later. One of the really great things about the timing of this is that if you remember two years ago, um, staff came to council and together we updated our current arts and culture grants. So those are our project grants and our sustained support grants. And we updated them to reflect the best practices in equitable grant making. We are bringing all of that work into these grants and buil- building it in right on the foundation. So there's gonna be equitable access, really um highly increased visibility of the process to get funding for cultural facility in our community. It'll be transparent and steam streamlined. We are gonna have regular predictable funding cycles on a two-year basis for these grants. And then we'll support a wide variety of organizations with these pro- this program. Like I said, the process will be very similar to selection and approval that we, our current art grants go through. A selection panel comprised of residents, art commissioners, and subject matter experts will review applications and score them. They will then give a recommendation to the arts council, who would, or arts commission, who would review that recommendation in a ranked order. And they would present that recommendation for council, to council for final approval. Final approval of these grants will remain with the council. Like I said, this will be a two-year grant cycle. The budget for this first year will be one point eight million dollars available for twenty-four, twenty-five. And should also know that we have some really strong precedent for these grants. They may be new to us, but it's not the first grants of these types in our region. There is um a great comparable with Four Cultures, Building for Equity, and the States Building for the Arts Program. And we looked very heavily at those programs for best practices while developing these. And with that, I'll hand it over to Manette.
Thank you, Lori. Um, so I will be covering eligibility and a few other particularities about this program. First and foremost, um eligible applicants will need to be nonprofits. They'll need to be in operation for at least two years, um be fiscally stable, and they'll need to demonstrate a diverse portfolio of funding, especially for larger projects that maybe um are more than one point eight million dollars and need additional funding. Um, or maybe there are parts of the project that we cannot legally cover with our grant program. Applicants who are seeking maintenance, um especially comprehensive maintenance of their building will need to be building owners. Um, and like all of our grants, they will need to provide a public benefit, which I will go into more detail. Um, broadly, offering um public access to the arts will be our main um look into public benefits. Um, this could look like complimentary discounted tickets, um, offering venues for um artistic and cultural events, um, providing free materials such as um audio recordings, video recordings, or publications. Um, amongst a few other items, um can be all considered a public benefit. Um, we also see that there's a lot of economic and social contributions that these venues can bring. Um, in a recent study um that we did partnering with Americans for the Arts, um, we found in Bellevue, on average, forty-nine dollars. Um, attendees spend an average of forty-nine dollars past their price of admission um when they attend a art and cultural event. And that generates um fifty-four million dollars in economic activity specifically in twenty-two, twenty-two. The parameters of the program um will broadly be reimbursable, um so it's be for costs incurred. Um, they cannot be used for operations of an organization or any fundraising activities. Um, larger projects, we are proposing to cap funding at forty percent of their project. Um, and for acquisition of land, um they will need to tie that land to a um capital facility project to align with this program um and its attended use. So timeline, um, we're working on a pretty fast timeline here. It's a pretty tight schedule and there's a important reason for this. Um, uh, there is an upcoming program um called Doors Open. Um, this will be administered by Four Culture, which is King County's Arts Authority. Um, and the program will offer one-time uh facility funding in the fall. Um, and we want our Bellevue organizations um to be best uh set for this program. And we think that having awards from Bellevue in hand will enhance their competitiveness for the Doors Open program. Um, so we want them to be ready to go, awards in hand from us um so that when um the Doors Open program opens, that they'll be, they'll be looking at them and seeing, okay, Bellevue's investing in this, this is a great project. The county also should invest. Um, and then um we just wanna note that this process um is very similar to our current arts grants. Um, it'll just be a little bit faster. So next steps, um if we're directed to move forward, we'll come back with three ordinances um on consent for your approval, um specifically for two different grant programs. Um, and then also expanding the role of the Arts Commission so that they may review these and provide recommendations for you for funding.
Happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Stokes, who's he's a liaison to the Arts Commission.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is very exciting. It's something we've been talking about, working on uh for ti- some time. And um, one of the things that has happened that we were affected by in a lot of places is the, the growth of Bellevue and the growth and the type of growth in Bellevue. And the arts and culture, we, it's always been very strong here. But it's also in the past been more inwardly focused in a sense. And um, and a, and a, it's kinda like what we've been working with on the Human Services Commission as well is that we're kinda focused on grants and things, but there are more to that and more, and it, it's a broader sense of how do we have arts and culture? How do we have human services programs put together and how they work? And that means putting more resources into it and doing programs in a different way. Uh, and for the arts and culture, um, you know, we're, we're really looking at these, these capital project grants uh in a very strong way and same thing with capital maintenance grants. Um, and what we're all coming down to is, is a great public benefit. And we, you know, we can go on for a long time and talk about the benefits and the, the actual dollar amounts that come back into the city because of grants and uh because of the work and everything else. But the long and short of it is, um, and, and to Jesse and and Lori and and Manette, they've just done an amazing job with this. And Jesse has brought this um concept that we understand now that the arts um and and uh creative work um actually are positive, you know, for, positive in the bank for uh for the cities and things. And it really is, is important. But the most important thing in the bank is the bank, people's bank in terms of their culture and their enjoyment and all that. And we're really, and making the growth that we have in Bellevue is a, I think, a huge piece of this. And Bell Red is a good example of that. So, now I'm very pleased to uh, to see this. And I think um this is gonna be a great benefit and a general leap forward for uh capital projects and everything here. And, and again, in working through uh our system. And I think one thing that you mentioned is we're not doing something dramatically different from this. It's just taking what we've been doing and expanding it and pushing it and actually uh getting out to the community more with this uh and recognizing the changes in the community. Uh, and so um I'm just really excited about this and, and I think uh it's a, something we need to, to do and we'll work on this. And we'll be coming back, uh, when's the, when's the plan to come back on this?
We're still looking for the council dates in the future, but probably hoping end of May, early June.
Okay, okay, good. Well, good, cause we need to have that ready for the summer and everything going forward, okay. So anyhow, the, we just have a great staff, tremendous staff. And um, the other thing is, and I, I don't know how many, you can't even count them on all your, all of your fingers and toes and everything else, the numbers of or organizations and people out there working in the, in the cul- uh arts. And it has grown tremendously and actually got through the pandemic and everything fairly well. Um, and what uh our staff and the work has been going on with all the people working in the arts uh community uh is we are a leader, a big leader, and a big trend setter in the arts and cultural uh in the, in the region and probably the state. And I think that's just amazing. So um, you're doing a great job and I, I'm very happy to bring this forward, that we're bringing this forward and uh-
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Let's move on to Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I just think this is really, really good work. I mean, you've put before us a really solid plan, really well thought out. So I was really impressed with what I saw. This seems like a really reasonable way to me for us to support the arts. And I think anytime we're moving from ad hoc to organized, that's always a best practice. So I think that's great. Um, and you know, a competitive grant process, clear eligibility standards, and defined program parameters. Um, I think that, you know, starting off with that kinda thinking is great. And, and looking, I thought the funding principles were really smart. Um, sustainable, long-term financial model. Um, we must clearly define the public benefit, should provide for the city involvement and financial oversight? Absolutely. Um, and must be an investment in a facility or for support of the operation of the facility and cannot fund fundraising activities. Uh, I think that's great. That's right where we wanna be focusing. And you know, I, I think this gives us the assurances we need to have for the community to receive the public benefit of these really critical uh community enhancing investments. And I think that forty percent cap, that means other folks are gonna be involved. That means the um, the, the folks who receive these grant funds, you know, they still have their work to do. This is, you know, this is a hand, but um there's still a lot for them. Uh, we're gonna be looking at well-qualified organizations. And I'm just really excited to see what the Arts Commission comes back to us with and uh certainly in favor of uh, of supporting this and really excited to see what comes out of this great work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Newenhouse.
All right, well, uh, thank you so much for the presentation. And um, you know, I'll let go a lot what uh Councilmember Stokes said. And uh, Councilmember Stokes, appreciate your leadership, being the liaison to the Arts Commission for these many years and getting it to this point. So uh, I am um all in favor of the three ordinances that you're looking and hope we can come back and come back on, on, on consent short, uh shortly. But uh, you know, establishing that capital projects, the maintenance, and then um putting it under the purview of the Arts Commission makes all the sense in the world. So, great work. Look forward to getting this implemented as, as soon as possible and uh look forward to hearing about the recommendations and the, and the, and the benefits of these, of these ordinances as we, as, as we go forward. Um, not just to them directly, but to the greater community. As Councilmember Stokes had mentioned, we've done some significant studies on, you know, the impact, the financial impact to our stu- to our city when we support the arts. So we need to increase that support and this is just another way we can do it. So, great job, thank you so much.
I really appreciate these positive comments. Councilmember Zahn?
Um, yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you for bringing us this program and really set up this way, because I too support increasing these investments. We've been talking about that for a while, especially recognizing during COVID that how much the creative economy struggled. So, you know, I think about the fact that art is life, and so the ability to help them. And I also appreciate the fact that in a two-year cycle, it gives more predictability to the funding, which is important, and that you were both thinking about the capital project side as well as the maintenance side, so I appreciate that. I was actually looking at this photo, the one previous to this one, where I believe that Councilmember Lee and I were at that Hang Da Dance Studio and watching these artists literally trying to dance in this very, very small space is challenging, and yet they do such a great job. So we need to figure out how to support the needs of our community. And so to that end, I do have a couple of questions, or maybe just comments. So when I think about the eligibility criteria, I would like to make sure that from an access and equity lens standpoint, that, you know, we're evaluating all of the applications from the standpoint that if there are organizations that have less access to investments and funding, then those might be ones we might want to think about leaning into a little bit more. And then on the public benefit piece, I think it would be important, when you come back, to be really clear and transparent about what that public benefit is, because it's not as clear to me, and you don't need to explain it to me right now, about that if there is an organization that gets, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, what does that really translate to in terms of public benefit? I know you brought a couple of those. Is it a one-for-one benefit, or how does that really work? So perhaps it's easier once you have the grant application recommendations to be able to describe that, but that would be one that I would like to better understand. And then lastly, I think that as we move forward as a council and increase the art investment, I would like to think that in addition to these grants, that we're also talking about for our own capital projects, do we start to consider some portion that of that, of a budget that's going to include art in our public-facing capital projects ourselves? Because then it holistically embeds art in facilities and throughout the city. So those are, I guess, a couple of feedback thoughts there for you.
Thank you. The feedback about making sure we're clear about outlaying public benefit when we return with recommendations is well heard.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a wonderful program. I think we all realize, you know, how important it is for people to express their culture and their, you know, appreciation. And the culture and art, really, it's intermingled, right? It's universal in a way. There's particular characteristics, but that's why it's important that other people in our community from different cultures appreciate it. I think it's really consistent with even the city's long-term vision. When we developed Belred Corridor, you know, we provided art and culture center, we provided office, we provided housing, various other, you know, ideas. We call it facilities or infrastructures that's there. So now I think we are beginning to make it happen. And so it's consistent with the mayor, and I was talking, you know, even in terms of economic development, because it brings people globally to come here, because they feel they want to be here, and they're comfortable, they feel they're welcoming, they feel at home. I think this is what, how we bring talent here, and we need talents in order to develop economic development, because we are steep in technology, in any, any business, actually. You know, it requires people. So this is a very important factor of, you know, prosperity, economic development, so on. Because of that, I want to suggest that, you mentioned benefit, you mentioned the word diverse project. I think that we need to keep in mind, most of these arts and culture shows we see are primarily very culture-specific. I always believe, that's why, you know, it's dear to me, that cross-culture center project is so important, because it brings all the cultures together. Rather than building silos, we're actually having people to understand other people's culture, appreciate it, and that most cultures can actually be working together, and that would create even richer culture collaboration. And as we know, a lot of new, modern art and culture are very, very diverse. They have music from Africa, with Asia, with Europe, and South America all combined, and making, you know, very creative, innovative products and projects. I think this is where Bellevue, with all the multicultural community we have, can really showcase what we can do with people who are separate, with building silos, we'll put them together. So after all the good things I said, I do have some couple of questions. When this, when you talk about facility, what do you mean by facility? Do you mean by teaching facility or performing facility? I think that's a big difference, right? So what, answer me.
Yes, so it would be both. It would be up to the organizations to present to us what their project is. The public benefit between those two, performance facility versus an educational facility, would look different, but both of them do have a public benefit to offer. So both would be eligible, and then both would go through the review and recommendation phase.
Okay. In terms of a performing facility, that's a major undertaking. Yeah, that's why, again, I think this is very commendable. Eventually, maybe with a private sector support, you know, we may have a wonderful facility to help all the groups, you know, art and culture groups, people that are doing there. But that is going to be, I hope, I think that's going to be a separate deal, right? You're not going to be looking at.
You know, he's asking a very interesting question.
Hundred-million-dollar facility we provide.
Would this money go towards something like Pace?
Yeah.
They, of course, could apply. It would not be the amounts that are large regional, we would call it like a regional performing arts center, that's a much larger budget consideration, and those are important. And we need the constellation of small and medium-sized organizations and facilities, too. Not all performing arts centers are huge. Some are very small, some can be fifty-seat houses, and that is a place where we build the core strength of our arts and culture community as well.
I want to compare, you know, parallel with cross-culture center, you know, we are, cross-culture center now using whatever facility they can get existing, and we know it's not adequate. Okay? So we have to figure out, is it programming? Is it, or are we looking at building facilities?
I think that's a totally separate discussion and budget.
That's what I'm saying, but I want to be sure we don't get lost in one or the other, because they seem to me.
Councilmember Lee, would you mind putting that thought on hold, because it's really confusing to the, what we're talking about right now?
I understand.
Yeah, but it's a worthy question.
I don't want to lose that thought.
Maybe you can get back to him on that, because I.
I hope that the council also hears that. So when we are prioritizing our projects, when we do our budget, you know, we understand how they interfit, how they act, how they are compatible, how they fit together.
Okay.
So let's see, one more. This example, how this is successful, like Winter Garden Festival, you know, every year they draw a lot of, when we talk about economic development, that's a real good model, and they don't even depend on the city. But we can help in whatever way we can, because many others would be similar to that.
This is so confusing. We're talking about something very different.
But it's all related.
Not entirely, and not tonight, for sure, but thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for a great presentation. I completely agree with everything that has been said. I think this is an important step in positioning Bellevue as the, hopefully, ultimate destination of art and culture, so thank you so much, and that's all I have for you.
And I'll just say that, speaking with our arts groups, this seems like exactly what needs to happen. It's a really good response. We're, we've all shown in our council priorities that we want to support the arts, and so I think this is a great way to do that. So thank you for bringing this forward. I wonder, Councilmember Stokes, would you like to make the motion? Or would you like the deputy mayor to do it?
So. What do we need? This is just a.
All right, why don't we have the deputy mayor do it, and you can second it.
Do you have something there?
I don't, I think we have.
It's okay.
Well, it's not a motion, we're not voting. It's my fault. This is entirely my fault, I apologize. We're directing staff, it seems like we have consensus to direct staff to return at a future meeting with an ordinance establishing the arts and cultural facility capital projects grant program.
Could we just put it on consent when it comes down?
Do you want to vote on it tonight? Can we vote on it tonight, since we have such a strong consensus?
You've provided, I believe, direction to staff to bring it back, and yes, you could bring this back on consent.
Okay, good idea. Let's bring it back on consent. Councilmember Stokes, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, if it's about this.
I want to know what's the financial, fiscal, what, yeah, what are we asking for? First two years? Is it going to be part of the budget consideration?
The budget for the first two years of the program will be one-point-eight million.
One point?
One-point-eight million.
Eight million?
Yeah.
I believe that's in the packet, that's pretty.
I know, I know, but.
Explain.
I was fine, like to know a little bit more about the rationale, about why not five, why not one, why not whatever. So thank you. You don't need to talk now.
Okay, but we can get back to him? Okay, sounds good, thank you. All right, well, we have one more item, and it's an ordinance. So.
Yes.
You know, I keep wanting to say deputy, it's not.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to invite Nick Whipple, and Matthew Menard, and Rebecca Horner back to the table. This is a proposed noise code amendment, returning to you for direction. Council provided feedback to staff regarding the proposed changes back in February, and staff's going to, again, share information that we've gathered in outreach since that presentation, and will review the draft ordinances for your consideration. So with that, I will turn it over to Nick.
Great, thank you. Good, excuse me, good evening again. So we have a very brief staff presentation on this item. This relates to the noise control code amendments. There are two aspects related to this code amendment. One is around construction noise, the other is around sleeping areas and the requirements for sleeping areas. So we are seeking action tonight. We have a few ordinance options that we'll be sharing with you tonight. Following discussion, staff is recommending ordinance option A. So Matthew will provide a bit of background on this item. We also, as noted, we're before you on February 26th, so we'll be reporting back on some of the information that was requested at that council study session. We'll go over the proposed changes and the different options that we have available for you tonight. We'll also touch on the sleeping areas code amendment, and then the process that got us to tonight. So with that, I'll turn this to Matthew.
Thanks, Nick. As Nick mentioned, we did bring this to you for a study session on February 26th. The objectives of this code amendment are to minimize the public's exposure to excessive noise, to support development, to establish additional occurrences for construction noise, so we do have an exemption program that allows you to extend those hours. We've extended some of the available options to extend those hours, to streamline permitting and codifier notification process with permitting. With all of our processes, we're always looking to see how we can do them better and faster for our development community, and to lower the cost of multifamily housing through the sleeping areas code amendment. As I mentioned, we did come to you on February 26th. At that time, we received direction to bring back some additional data on noise complaints related to construction noise, and then look at a couple of different options for what we brought you on the 26th, including adding some hours to those options, and potentially an option which would set different hours for those areas adjacent to low-density residential areas. We did hear general support, both from the public and from you, for the sleeping areas change. We have had, I will note, a couple of comments come in recently, asking us not to change those sleeping areas decibels. The first piece of data that you all had asked for was a comparison to adjacent communities. So if you look at our hours for construction noise, we are the most restrictive of any of our neighbors. Kirkland does allow till 8:00 PM throughout the city. Redmond allows until 10:00 PM unless it impacts residential zones, and then they limit it from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We do have some concerns with that impacting language as well, so we've provided two options that are similar to those, but not identical to those. The second piece of data you all had asked for was looking more deeply into our construction noise complaints, where those were occurring and when they were occurring. The majority of them were handled by the police department, so we don't have too much data on them. We do know that there are 158 construction noise complaints in 2023. The map on your screen there shows the location of those that were submitted to code compliance, as we do have a larger report for those. There were 32 of those in 29 single properties that were submitted to code compliance. You can see on the map there that the highest frequency of those are in downtown, there's a cluster around downtown, but the majority of them were in our single-family neighborhoods. We did receive more complaints, on average, in the summer months, we think probably because there are open windows and people are outside more often in the summer. Another thing to note, that's not on the slide, but we were asked to look at the hours we were receiving complaints, and by far, the vast majority of complaints were received in the hours either directly before or after our current allowed hours. So 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM, or 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM were the majority of the hours we were getting complaints. So we didn't get any significant data showing a difference between option A and option B that you'll see shortly here. So the first aspect of the code amendment clarifies and expands a list of types of construction noise where you can apply to extend our hours. Right now, under the code, if you're undertaking a construction process that has traffic impacts or health and safety impacts, we allow you to apply to development services to extend the hours that you're allowed to make construction noise. The way it's written in the code right now is somewhat confusing, the way the list is sort of done is separated by semicolons, so it creates confusion, and it's somewhat limiting. So we've expanded that list slightly to allow for construction projects that take more than the allotted time to complete, so something like a large construction project may take longer than the time we would allow, so allowing them to apply for an extension to complete that task all in one go, and then some additional items to ensure worker safety when there's extreme weather events. It also establishes a written notification process. When you receive that exemption, you do have to notify the neighbors that there will be additional construction noise past the hours that it is allowed. We do want to make sure the residents are aware. We also want to make sure that police department resources are not being tied up with construction noise complaints when we've approved them to make that construction noise. The other thing it does is to streamline permitting. It allows them to apply for multiple instances of these extensions within a 30-day period. Thirty days is the sideboards that the state puts on us, so we can't go beyond that 30-day period, but if they were to have two or three of these exemptions, for example, in a month, they would be able to apply for that under one permit instead of two or three permits. So it's easier on our end for our staff, we won't have to administer as many permits, and it's easier for the development and construction communities, they won't have to apply for as many permits. The big discussion we had at the study session was around the hours we shall allow construction noise until. We've provided three options for you this evening. We are recommending option A, which was the option we provided at the study session. At the study session, we are also directed to look into option B, which was really what we heard from public comment from the construction and development community, which is extend it from 6:00 to 8:00 instead of 6:00 to 7:00 PM, with them stating that that would cut time off of their construction projects and allow them to complete some of these bigger, more complex tasks that you see with some of our high-rise development in the city. The third option that was requested that we look at from Council on 26th was changing those hours adjacent to low-density residential districts, so keeping that 8:00 PM weeknight hour, but then if it is adjacent to a low-density residential neighborhood, knocking that back to the study session recommendation. Some considerations for that, why we are recommending option A, and many of these will also apply to option B, other than the last bullet point, which I'll cover shortly. It does treat all properties equally under the code. We do think that's important, as it's easier to administer and understand, both for the staff, the public, and those who are doing development or doing construction. You won't have to know what land use district you are in, you won't have to know what land use district the adjacent. You won't have to know what land use district the adjacent property is in. You don't have to understand where the property lines are, where the construction noise is coming from. You have that set expectation that it's this hour that construction noise is allowed until, and any construction noise after that hour is not allowed by the city. So, we do think that's important, just as a ease and expectation setting. It also, hopefully, will minimize construction noise complaints that aren't valid, because everyone will understand what our construction noise allowances are. By extending the hours, and this would apply to option A or option B or option C, by extending those hours, it will limit the duration of the construction projects, which means you have more impact on a single day. But over time, the construction will be shorter, so you have a more or shorter period of those actual construction impacts overall. And that's not just noise, but also transportation impacts. It does also have the potential to slightly lower the cost of housing construction, as you can now get your project finished more quickly, which allows you to fill the project, so you're not sitting on a loan while you're building for quite as long. This is the really big consideration, policy consideration, we see between option A and option B, which is that balance between quality of life for the day-to-day and the construction length consideration. So, we know that the later you make noise into the evening, the more people's day-to-day is going to be interrupted by that construction noise. And so, for option A, we are trying to find the balance between that day-to-day impact and shortening the construction projects enough, so we have an overall shorter impact. Option A will have less of that day-to-day impact and a little bit longer construction period, whereas option B would have a little bit more of that day-to-day impact, but a shorter duration of construction projects. We have been told by the construction community that going until 8:00 p.m. on weeknights would cut about a week, a day, a week off of their projects, so about a 20% reduction. Now, I'm just looking at option C. We do want to just give you a map showing the areas that would be impacted by option C. So, all the areas in the light yellow and the darker yellow would be subject to those shorter hours. So, that'd be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. rather than the areas in white, which would have that 8:00 p.m. cut off. It does impact substantially the multifamily-zoned areas in the city, as you can see with the checkerboard overlay there, as we often use those areas as buffers between our mixed-use areas and the single-family neighborhoods. It also doesn't take into account other residential areas of the city. So, the vast majority of that area you see in white on the map there is a mixed-use district and has the potential and oftentimes does have residential development in it. So, it doesn't take into account that residential development. So, we are highly recommending option A or option B rather than option C. And the final code amendment is the sleeping areas code amendment. Right now, we require if your building line has a volume of over 65 decibels that you attenuate that sound to 40 decibels in sleeping areas and 45 decibels in non-sleeping areas. This is lower than national standards and what's recommended by HUD and the EPA. So, we are recommending moving that up to 45 decibels. This has been a longstanding recommendation from the development community. We've heard they are having to order specialty windows and materials to attenuate lower than that 45 decibels. So, cutting some costs off construction and making that construction a little bit easier for multifamily housing. As I mentioned earlier, we have received a couple of public comments requesting that we do not change this from 40 decibels. The process with this... So, this is phase two of our noise code updates. Phase one was amplified sound. That was completed a couple of years ago. We've been doing outreach since then on this project. We did reach out to the W Development Committee on January 10th. We heard very significant support, again, for the sleeping areas update at that meeting. We held the study session on the 26th, and we are here tonight for potential action. We have provided you all three options in ordinance form for you to adopt if you would like to do so. You can also direct us to come back at a later date for action as well. And with that, Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Do you have a slide that shows the things... So, we're talking about the length of time that the construction can occur in, but we're also talking about changing the BCCA level, right? How do I say that? Did I say that correctly?
The DBA.
Pardon me?
The DBA level? Is that what you're...
Oh, the sleeping areas. The DBA. Sure. So, there's two things that we're talking about. So, maybe keep this up here, because this is harder to remember. So, let's talk about the times that we're going to allow construction. Let's talk about the DBA level as well. And I'll start with deputy mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you for a great presentation, and thank you for taking all of our questions in our last council meetings and going back and come back with some information that we asked for. I do not have any problem with the sleeping areas that you are recommending to increase that by five DBA. Can you go for a second back to the options? Then I can talk about that, and then you can come back to this slide. I am more aligned with option A, and I believe in option A, you are already increasing the construction hours by one hour. And I think that was aiming for a balanced approach between boosting the construction efficiency, as all of the developer mentioned, considering the economic impacts that bring to us, but also minimizing the disruption to our community. I really don't want to go home after working from 6:00 a.m. at 7:00 a.m., and I wanted to rest and still hear construction noise personally. And I agree that one hour is going to expedite the project is great. But I think it's crucial that we recognize the impact of the noise after 7:00 p.m. to our community. There are some well-established studies that shows the... What can this noise of construction can do to the well-being of our community? I studied some of those journal articles. And I also did something else. I studied 30 cities, not three. And then I did some... 60% of them was seven and before seven. Just 40% was something after 7:00 p.m. So, I think overall, I am going to be aligned with option A, that, as you mentioned, does the strike between increasing one hour, helping the developer community to finish the construction, but also saving some trouble for our community and the resident who lives by of this construction. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all your work on this. Just wanted to make a point about kind of that last bullet regarding the quality of life. And so, I'm not sure that I see this really as a quality of life versus construction length. I think it kind of depends on your perspective. So, less, a shorter duration of this construction noise, I think, to many, myself for sure. But shorter duration adds to the quality of life. I'd like to just have the project start and get done. So, just wanted to mention that. I am strongly in favor of option B. And I think we are in a unique situation here to do something meaningful in speeding up construction times. Now, we just talked about the importance of adding affordable housing and considering all the housing that we need to add, the chance to cut 20% off of a construction timeline. Instead of 12 months, we're looking at nine and a half months. I really think that's substantial. And when you're thinking about moving into new housing, I think that really does make a difference. So, again, you know, that extra noise for 20% less time, that makes sense to me. And building, it does create noise. But I think we just get started on the work and we get the work done. And while option B does represent a significant change for the city of Bellevue, as you noted in the presentation, it puts us right in the middle of the pack with our neighboring cities. So, we'll allow one more hour than Kirkland on Saturdays with option B and remain generally more restrictive than Redmond with it.
And you're okay with the proposed decibel levels for sleeping areas?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
I think also getting more aligned with our neighboring cities gives us, enhances our regional competitiveness. So, I think we want our for-profit and nonprofit partners, I think, to have this benefit. I think another unique factor about the change, the construction noise exemption, is that we have an unusually broad amount of support for doing so. We have gotten a lot of feedback. We heard from Leslie Geller, who's Eastgate Neighborhood Leader, and who is in favor of option B. She says, for her, last... That having construction projects last a shorter time would be a welcoming change. Lyuna, the union that represents workers who are going to be involved in building a lot of our construction projects, are in support of option B. They certainly, too, they talked to their members about working on Saturdays. And so, you know, these are important, high-wage, family-wage jobs that workers have. They want to have a chance to work on some Saturdays. They'd like the chance to get home an hour earlier to their families. And I think we... You know, to me, that's very compelling. We've had the Chamber weigh in. NAOP has weighed in. AGC, they call it a reasonable middle ground choice to support necessary growth. We've heard from Amazon, Vulcan, SRM, and Excel, who are also supportive of option B. Also want to point out that we all received an email from a nonprofit housing developer, Imagine Housing. They're in support of option B as well. And their ED put it this way. Affordable housing truly requires three things: time, money, and land. Having more time to finish our construction actually saves us more money in the lease-up process afterwards. I think adding extra hours on a day allows us to deliver affordable units at a lower potential cost. Hard to put it better than that. I certainly can't. So, we have broad support. We have workers, developers, contractors, community members, and the community, the business community at large, who are all in favor of option B. And I just think that with that level of support, really removes any doubt that moving forward with option B is the right choice. I intend to support it, and my colleagues will as well. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Thank you very much. I find it really helpful that you're providing these options and your reasoning for that. I'm going to start with the... I support the 45 decibels in sleeping areas. And really, these are the code minimums. So, developers can choose to lower the decibel in sleeping areas if they so choose. This is just a, what is the regulatory minimum that we're going to mandate? That's correct? Yeah. So, to me, that makes sense.
Don't you mean maximum, or do I have that wrong?
It would be the minimum requirement.
Yeah. The minimum requirement.
Requirement. Okay.
Maximum decibels.
Yeah.
There's a tongue twister right there.
Well, the maximum allowed.
Not minimum.
It's the minimum requirement.
It's the maximum allowed.
For the maximum allowance of a 45 dB.
I see that. Not minimum.
It's setting a new minimum for the maximum.
They could attenuate further, lower decibels if they so choose.
Yeah. It makes sense, but you can just think of it as the maximum allowed, because...
I'm not trying to confuse anyone. So, the 45 decibel is fine.
I know. It is confusing.
And then, on the noise generating, I've been listening to my colleagues, reading the information that came in. And what I keep thinking about is the amount of construction that we have and the ability to complete the work as efficiently as possible. I mean, my whole industry at the Port of Seattle is about constructing and trying to get the best work accomplished. So, I do support option B, recognizing that there is a balance between the quality of life and the noise and the work hours. I do appreciate my colleagues and the research that they've done to look at all of the different cities and what they're doing. Ultimately, I think that this is something that makes sense for the growth that we're in in Bellevue and what we're trying to accomplish together with building as efficiently and quickly as possible. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you. Yeah. I too appreciate all the work's gone into this thus far and the research and what you've come back with. Really, really, really appreciate that. You know, this is, in a strange way, kind of echoing our last conversation a little bit. But, you know, again, if we want to give as many tools as possible to the developers creating housing, this is just another tool that we can provide. That extra hour, as Councilmember Hamilton, in his very comprehensive comments, you know, illustrated that point quite well.
To clarify, it's an extra two hours. We're going from 6:00 to 8:00 in option B, unless you're talking about option A.
Sorry. What was your comment?
You're saying it's an extra hour, and I'm saying it's an extra two hours if you're going for option B, just to clarify.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I was comparing it from A to B. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, now, where... The other comment is just about the competitiveness piece, which has been brought up as well with our growth, with our commitment to growing affordable housing and the housing crisis, et cetera. It's hard to imagine, you know, that Redmond or Kirkland would have longer hours than we would, especially given all the construction happening in downtown. So, again, this is something we're hearing from residents, from affordable housing leaders, from construction developers and neighborhood leaders that want to see this get done and get done sooner, these projects. And I really appreciate your considerations on this in terms of the staff recommendations. It would have been great if these bullet points in support of option A, I guess, were put on a separate slide, because it looks as if... And I know you mentioned it, that it applies to all of them. But on this slide, it looks like it only represents option A, and certainly, it all applies to option B as well. But under option B, all these great bullet points, you know, are amplified under option B and why I support it. So, lowering that cost of housing construction, limiting overall duration of the construction noise impacts. And I won't read them all, but they're all, you know, reasons to go with option B, in my opinion. So, I'm strongly in favor of it. I'm also in favor of going to the 45. I think that's reasonable, and I'll be voting for option B. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll go ahead, and I'm okay with the modified decibel levels that you're recommending. So, I'm going to clarify for the community. What we have right now is 7 to 6 on weekdays and 9 to 6 on weekends. And staff is recommending to add an hour just on the weekdays. And option B is to add two hours on the weekdays and an hour in the morning of weekends. So, I'm going to speak, and this is with increased decibels, by the way, we're doing, we're looking at both. So, I'm going to speak as a resident of downtown who actually is not affected by this, because I don't live in a high-construction area. But your own research told you that most of the complaints were downtown. Most of the complaints were about noise from 7:00 p.m. on and not before. They weren't complaining about 6:00 or 5:00. It was about 7:00 p.m. and on. And I get all the complaints. So, last year, when Amazon was doing their building next to the Bellevue Towers, and it was all day, it just really does affect people's quality of life. And the fact that you have the biggest neighborhood in downtown, so you have the most people living there. And I think that's unique to Bellevue. I don't think we have as many people living in the downtown of Kirkland and of Redmond. I'm just guessing, because the population size of the cities are so different. But, you know, that's a huge impact, and I hear about it a lot. So, I know it's a problem for the people who live downtown. So, I, you know, I'm all for supporting the development that we're planning, obviously. We're allowing a lot of development downtown. We expect to see a considerable amount of development in the next five years. So, I'm okay with going one hour, as the staff recommends. I really think it's... I really think it's, negatively impacts residents on Saturdays as well. I like keeping the hours on the Saturdays and so I'm going to be supporting option A. And Councilmember Stokes, let's do you next.
Well, this is, this is really hard one to gauge and, because you're talking about something that's a little, it's not real concrete when it comes down to it. Every house or every building has different levels and all that. But I do think in the long run, change, a little bit of change, an hour or two is not going to make a big difference. And I do think that the, and given, since everything is going up and construction still is very expensive and probably will continue to grow up, and people like to get buildings built and get all that outside, it's more outside that really irritates people, and get that out of the way as quickly as possible. So, basically what it is, to me, it's not that big a difference. It's going to be two hours on weekdays. Most of that time will be getting ready. It's not going to be pounding hammers or anything. Excuse me. And in the morning, it's just back one, Saturday morning's one hour, still eight o'clock. The biggest thing is that this will have a very positive effect on the time it takes to build these buildings and it'll have some costs. Now, obviously, having a little bit longer time period to work on a day has a little more cost, but I think from what we're hearing on this is that getting the job done in, you know, twenty days as opposed to, you know, thirty days is a lot of savings on funding and is a very positive thing to do. And from everything I understand, the, and there's a lot of construction going on in Redmond and Kirkland, and their, their time is a lot different in hours and they're not, they're still going forward on that. They're not having any real uprising against it. And so, I think it's a rational thing to do at this point and is option B. Now, if we run into problems or if it becomes a problem at some point, we can do something with it. But I think this is a rational thing to do, given all the factors of cost, of timing. People want buildings next door to be done quickly. So, I'm very positive about option B.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
I'm very sympathetic to what the mayor was saying. You know, if I were to live in downtown, right, with the noise and all that, you know, I would probably want to have a shorter, you know, time. However, I think I agree with your rationale when you mentioned and the, I'm sure the others, that if they can work longer hours during the day, they can get a project done sooner. And so, that actually will provide the benefit for me if I live there, you know, because I have one day free or two days free, not listening to a lot of construction noise because they have longer time during the rest of the time to build it. So, I think that is a good thing, you know, if I were to live there. In terms of the, so I would support, you know, B. The decibel, you know, forty-five versus forty, that doesn't cause any change in construction schedule. It's just how much noise you make. I don't know. I don't know whether they can control it. I assume they can, right? If you have a certain rule. So, I empirically, I think the lower would be better. But, you know, if it makes it more efficient to get the job done, I, even then, I would say, I would, so I want to ask you that question. Does it make the construction faster, easier if it's less noisy or more noisy? I don't know.
So, the sleeping areas change doesn't relate specifically to construction. It relates specifically to how loud the interior of a finished building can be with the maximum noise levels. So, what it does is allow the interior of the building to be slightly louder with intrusion from exterior noise. What we've heard from the developing community, and we've heard this for many years now, is that because we are lower than those national standards, what EPA and HUD is recommending, it's costing them a lot more, especially for buildings with a lot of windows, to attenuate that sound down to that level because they're having to order specialty products.
So, does it impact the cost of the building? So, I think that's what we're looking for. So, we want to have buildings less cost, right? Because hopefully they'll pass on to the consumers. So, on that basis, if it doesn't make that much difference, I would support forty-five. So, I support forty-five, DBA, I would support option B.
Okay. So, I'm seeing, you know, a majority in support of option B. I'm going to put out a question to the council. Would you feel comfortable keeping the Saturday hours the same? So, moving the weekday hours from seven AM to eight PM instead of six PM, but keeping the Saturday hours at nine AM to six PM instead of eight AM to six PM? And if you can speak to that, if it's, yes?
For the reason I stated, I don't think.
Okay. How about you, Councilmembers on? How do you feel about that?
So, just to be clear, what you're recommending is a hybrid between A and B?
Yeah. Keeping the Saturday hours.
Keeping the Saturday at nine.
Option A.
To six. So, that would then, if you go back to the slide with the comparison with other cities, then that would bring us to match what Redmond and Kirkland have of the nine to six on Saturday.
Well, residential zones in downtown, is a residential zone.
It's a simple question, yes or no?
I'd be willing to support it.
How about you, Councilmember Hamilton?
I think one of the, some of the feedback that I got, especially from the union and from Imagine Housing, is that that eight AM start on Saturdays is really critical and that that's been an issue that's been raised by workers for quite a while. So, I do think it's important that they be able to get that jump on the day, get their Saturday work done and get back home. So, I think option B, as it's presented here, is where I'd like to stay with.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I am aligned to keep the Saturdays starting from nine AM to six PM. Keep that as what it is.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Keep option B as it is.
Okay. I'm obviously in favor of the hybrid, the Saturday hours as option A. Councilmember Stokes, how about you?
Option B and I'm okay with the other, the time, what's the other thing?
The weekend Saturday.
The weekend thing.
Okay.
No, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about.
The sleeping areas?
What?
The sleeping area decibels?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
I didn't write it down.
All right, so, so we'll go ahead and, yeah.
Can I, I do have one question.
Sure.
So, just to be clear, what we're talking about is only when the construction is noise-generating exceeding a certain decibels, right? So, if we're talking about only the Saturday duration and keeping it at the nine to six, that doesn't mean that the contractor can't be coming in and staging and getting various pieces in place. It just means that the noise generating above that certain decibel is only allowed from nine to six. Is that correct?
Correct. So, all noises that are under our allowed decibels are basically exempt from the noise code. So, the construction noise would be the same. So, if it's under the decibel threshold and it varies by what we call EDMS, so they're essentially aligned with our residential, commercial, and industrial districts. So, it varies based on time of day and day of the week. But if they're below that level, they're not in violation of the noise code.
And what is that decibel in downtown?
So, I don't have it in front of me, Nick. I don't know if you have it. Downtown would likely be EDNA B, so it's going to be our second level, but they're quite low. I think generally they're in the sort of fifty-five to seventy-five decibel range for, depending on what EDNA you're impacting as well.
Okay, so if I'm a contractor and I'm staging and laying down my materials for the day, am I likely to exceed that decibel level? And this is an important piece when I think about the hours and the duration for just the noise-generating activities that exceed.
I think if you're running generators or you're laying something down that's going to be louder, like scaffolding, you will likely exceed the noise levels. I can actually go to the, we have the chart on the bottom here. So, if you're talking about, you know, sixty-five, you're quieter than a car, basically. So, any sort of staging that's going to involve moving materials is in all likelihood going to exceed those levels.
So, if we, so if we leave it at nine to six, then the reality is contractors, those are going to be their work hours. Because if we're talking about sixty decibels, which is chatting, then any work that they're doing that's outside of the exterior of an enclosed building would exceed that.
Yeah, so I think the tasks you're going to see that are going to fall under that would be something like sweeping up a site after work or small tasks like that. It's not intended to exempt large-scale construction tasks.
Okay, I see. Then I'm inclined to stay with B. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Of course. I move to adopt ordinance six, seven, eight, six, option B, amending Bellevue City code chapter nine point eighteen, noise control, to expand exempt hours for construction noise, clarify the construction noise exemptions, create a public notice process, and modify the allowed decibel levels for sleeping areas.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, it passes five-two. So, I think we are all done. Thank you. That was a great meeting. We are adjourned.